So good evening and welcome to the February 13th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. This all Zoom meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Foxborough Cattle Access. This meeting is being hosted webinar style on Zoom, meaning only the Select Board and scheduled presenters will have the capacity to appear on camera and audio. If you are a scheduled presenter, please be sure your name is accurately shown so that FCA can elevate you to a panelist when your agenda item is up. If someone from the general public wants to make a comment, please raise your hand, your Zoom hand, so Foxborough Cattle Access can promote you temporarily to panelist status. Once you have spoken, you will return then to view only mode. Otherwise, attendees are off camera and listening. To raise your hand if you're on, if, to raise your hand if you're on a computer, choose reactions, then raise hand. If you've dialed in by phone, dial star nine to raise and lower your hand. Please lower your hand once done speaking. Should you experience any technical difficulties during our session, our immediate guidance would be to log out and log back on. Should you need further assistance, please email Katie Lang, our board liaison who's on at K Lang at Foxborough, F O X B O R O U G H M A dot gov.
We're just waiting for Steph. Doc was gonna maybe try to call in because he's on the road. So Doc, are you listening? Star nine, if you are, so I assume he's not. And we're just waiting for Steph to see if she's able to get on.
Okay. And do we have Katie, do we have anyone send in citizens input in advance of the meeting?
No, nothing on the email. And I just did talk to Doc, he's gonna, he's gonna be signing in shortly.
All right, great. And do we have Pat Costello on Cattle Access to see if he can be presented, he can be raised to a panelist as up there, he is, I see him coming. And then, um, just so we're all ready, when, when Steph does get on, do we have the folks? Okay, great, I see Mr. Patel just promoted. And just as a reminder to the board, I think everyone's on mute, but if you're not, you know, or anyone that's, that's joining as a, as a, someone for an agenda item, if you could just make sure you're on mute if you're not speaking, it'll just help the meeting run a little bit smoother. We will have to vote by roll call this evening as well, since we are all on Zoom. This is a continuation of the public hearing too. Do we need to do anything with that, Pat? Or, you know, it was still continued to a date certain?
Good evening. Yes, I would suggest that you summarize the notice of the hearing, what it involves, what, what's being discussed by the board here this evening. And note that the initial hearing in the matter was convened on December 19th, 2023. And notice for that particular hearing had issued on December 8th, 2023. This is a continuance of that hearing. I think that satisfies it.
Okay. So it, you just said all that. So I think, you know, we're here to continue the public hearing from then. It was still open, so it sounds like we don't need to open it. We just giving Steph another minute, Paige, or are we moving on since we have? At least three of us here.
Yeah, she's, Katie, did you get my message that I just sent you? So we're trying, she's still having no luck. I'm gonna suggest she just dial in so she can at least listen. Um, and then I, I don't, she can't get on for some reason, so I'm gonna give her the phone number right now.
All right, great. So I see a couple people from the restaurant on, or from, from Olive and Mint Ambrosia. And since we're on Zoom tonight, we're just, we're just taking a couple of minutes, if you hadn't heard that. Just as we get kind of organized to get ourselves going, we do have two board members who are just waiting on, otherwise we'll, we'll get started shortly. Are you able to be on camera? Is everyone just gonna be on phone? I do think it's, it's a little easier for everyone just to manage the discussion if people are on camera, if possible. But if not, I understand that may not be possible for everyone tonight. And I don't know if we have Steph on the phone, if we're able to see when she's on to promote her to panelists. I don't know how it shows to you, Katie. It shows the phone number that they're dialing in from, because I imagine it's not gonna show the name.
We do have someone's hand raised, if you want to entertain that, Liza Click. Oh, maybe she just lowered her hand. She, she lowered her hand.
And Mr. Patel, there was an attorney with you last time. Is that person coming this evening? Is that maybe the name of the person?
I know they're not present today.
Okay. So we have two people from Olive and Mint Ambrosia. Is that, is that everyone? Okay.
Yep.
All right, in the interest of time, we're getting to be almost 10 minutes. I don't know if we wanna...
Maybe you get going and I'll, I'll try to, I'll continue to work with Steph to get her to call in.
Okay. Did you wanna, did you wanna kick this off, Paige, or were you looking from your side?
Sure, I, no, I can start off. As you recall, we discussed this previously and the way it stood is that there was not a food permit, so therefore the all alcohol license would not be able to be granted, since in Foxborough it is required you serve food with alcohol. The applicant has been working with the Board of Health and went to the Board of Health, I believe on February 5th. And I believe they were issued a permit for a certain amount of time. Uh, we, I am sure have Matt Brennan on here, if, if we want any update from Matt Brennan. But, um, and we need to elevate him. We have a bunch of staff on here, ready to speak on this matter. So tonight we are discussing, they did get through the Board of Health. That said, I can provide some update that as of today, we checked at the very end of the day, the February 1st taxes were not paid. So again, we're back in a situation where in Foxborough permits cannot be granted unless people are up to date on their taxes. So that is, I feel, a pretty big obstacle. And I see Matt just joined us, so we might want to hear from him. But I did want to bring up the tax situation as that is something that is a barrier to issuing permits in Foxborough. Matt, you wanna chime in on the Board of Health update?
Yeah, so we met with Olive and Mint at the latest hearing, at the latest board meeting. Basically, what we said is that we would give them a temporary permit, provided they do specific things. Uh, we don't have those individual items yet, so basically, we asked them to provide a contract that all their full-time people are trained in food safety and food safety management, as well as to have a, basically a food consultant there during events. So we're waiting for that information from them to grant the permit. So no permit has been granted at this time. Um, and if they do not follow those recommendations, we can also revoke that permit. So like I said, um, you know, we haven't issued a permit yet. Uh, I am, uh, if they can, you know, make all, give me everything that, you know, they need to be submitted, as well as pay any taxes owed to the town.
So just to summarize where we were at, the, the food permit had to come first before the alcohol permit. It, it sounds based on what Matt is saying, they are not satisfied on, on two pieces. Number one, they aren't, they don't have a food permit today because they have not satisfied the training, the consultant that's needed, and then also the taxes are not paid. So I don't know if we want to turn it over to the applicants? Or if there's anyone else, you know, Paige, that you have that needs to speak from the town to set the stage?
I guess I would ask if there's anybody else, you know, Scott Shippey, I don't think, I don't think anybody else probably has much more to add. Um, if they do, they go ahead and join us, but otherwise, I think we're, you know, we're, we're, the situation has not been resolved. And I think I have to say, before we let the applicant speak, from the town side, the amount of effort it is taking to monitor the situation and to keep track of compliance and is really become quite onerous. So at this point, we would recommend that an all alcohol license not be granted, and perhaps not even, we'd go so far as to say not even on a temporary basis like the Board of Health did. We are recommending that this permit not be granted and move forward from there, because it's just been a demonstrated lack of ability to comply. I mean, right down to the fact that, you know, taxes are not yet paid. Here we are, what is it, 12 days after taxes due? And, you know, I'm sure we all paid our taxes. So it's just, it's very frustrating. We did also hear there's an event being advertised coming up on February 16th. And it just, it's just very concerning that it feels like if we take our eye off the prize, we don't know, you know, we don't know what the plan is there. And it's just become quite onerous to town staff, and it doesn't seem fair to the many businesses that do comply with all the rules and regulations in town.
And if I can just add one more thing, if Scott's not here too, I do still believe there's an occupancy piece that's outstanding as well, that I know a letter came from the applicant today. But quite frankly, it always seems to be on the date of the meeting, you know, we'll get a letter dated that day that they've contracted someone. But I did go back and watch the meeting from December 19th, and at that meeting, we were, oh, Scott is here now, I see, he's got his hand up, so I'll let Scott take that one. Scott, are you still there to hear what I was starting to talk about the?
Load calculation.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. It's been over like, I believe, six months. I mean, I've been asking for this for a long time, and it's just not forthcoming. We, we allowed them to have that New Year's Day party contingent upon having a detail, fire detail there, and we still didn't receive that documentation. And now we're saying that it's gonna be February 28th, and I just don't think that's reasonable if they, to allow them to have another function without, without this calculation.
All right. And just before we move forward too, I just want to let everyone know, watching at home, just because it is a different, you know, format that we have here. If you are speaking and you're not on camera, it's really important that you just introduce yourself going forward. People that are on camera are promoted, and it's easy for everyone at home to kind of follow who's talking. But we have had Mark Elfman join as well, so now there's four board members here. We have Seth and Dennis and I on Zoom, and we have Mark Elfman on the phone. Steph maybe joining us at some point, she was having a little technical difficulty, but we can let people at home know when we've had, when we've had her join as well.
I see Steph's name on the participant panel, so I don't know. Steph, can you hear us?
I don't see her.
I don't.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep, oh, there's, now I see Steph. She just popped on. So now we have the full board here on Zoom, we have three of us on audio and video, and then Mark Elfman and Stephanie McGowan are here on, on the phone too. So we just kind of set the stage with where we're at, with, with the applicant for Ambrosia, Olive and Mint. There's a couple of non-starters, I think, for our board when it, when it comes to an alcohol permit. They're not satisfied with the Board of Health, and the February 1st taxes are now also delinquent, as well as some, some water bills. So we were just kind of setting the stage for this. We do have Pat Costello on the phone as well, Town Council. And I think we were about ready to turn it over to the applicant, just to catch everyone up who was having difficulty and joined.
Thank you, Leah. I guess you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Me, even though you can't see me?
We can hear you, yep. And, and we didn't have anyone for citizens input, but I don't know if people were having trouble, maybe we come back to that after. But we didn't have anyone at the time who had raised their hand, someone raised their hand and put it, put it down, just in case you missed that piece as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I think we're all organized and we're all here. So Doc, I'll, I'll, if, if you want me to help out, just because I'm on video and I think I have yous here, but otherwise, we were gonna, we have two people from Ambrosia and Olive and Mint here, who were ready to respond to that.
Yeah, no, I, I've been listening since the beginning, I just couldn't get on till just now. So no, I'll let you continue on through this agenda item, if that's okay with you, but I, I'm all caught up, I, I heard it all.
Okay, great. So, you know, folks from Olive and Mint and Ambrosia, it'd be great if you are on video, just so we know who we're speaking to. It can be a little hard, but if you're just gonna be on audio, that's, that's fine as well, just let us know who's speaking, since we can't see you in front of us.
This is Nandish Patel from Nirvi Inc. So as far as the three things that were just brought up, first of all, the, the Board of Health, with that, we already have a consultant. I was supposed to meet today in, because of the storm, it got scheduled to tomorrow, but I'll have the, the paperwork from him saying that he has been hired and he's going to be scheduling the staff. I think they gave 30 days for us to schedule staff certification, so that's gonna be done as well. Secondly, as far as the occupancy goes, they had been hired, it's not, it's not like they were just hired this week. They did, they came out, I believe, three weeks ago, they did their measurements, they gave us a plan, which we've seen, but there were a few exits missing in that, so they have to come out again this week to measure out those exits from the restaurant side, and then redo their calculations, which is why they've given February 28th as the date that they're hoping to have that completed.
And just to clarify, on December 19th, we were told someone had already went out to measure, so it's just a little bit different story than we got last time.
Um, so no, before, we had found plans from the previous owners, which we had given to the company to look at. They did come out and take a look at the site, but they didn't, they didn't do the measuring, and they looked at the plans and they said, those plans that they had gotten from the previous owners were not sufficient enough to do the calculation. So then they had to schedule people to come out and, and measure out everything.
Okay, if you go back and watch it, you guys told us someone came out and measured and took photos, I watched the meeting today. It wasn't you, it was one of the other gentlemen that were here.
Okay. Um, as far as the taxes go, we, you know, we were out of the country, we just came back last week. So this week, we're arranging everything for all of that to be paid.
You know, and I think that's just another thing, just as far as respect to the board and respect for, you know, time, I do think it's just important to call out too, that the day of the Board of Health meeting last time, that we had all talked about the date and we knew when it was, I believe you guys had canceled that day, saying you were out of the country. So it's, it's just really important to communicate with, you know, all these volunteers and town employees that are, you know, getting these agenda items ready, and then, you know, at the last minute, there's a change again, so.
Yeah, I understand, we apologize for that.
So with, with that said, you know, I don't know if there's any other questions from the board, or?
We have Betsy, we have Betsy, sorry to interrupt, from the Board of Health with her hand raised, so are we able to promote her to be able to speak?
And while we're doing that, Betsy's the Chair of the Board of Health, just for our board, I did attend the Board of Health meeting in person a week or so ago as well. So I see Betsy has been promoted, she's here. Betsy, would love to hear from you as well. I know at the time of your meeting, you know, you guys ran to the impression the taxes had been fully caught up, and they had been, but then there was another payment that was due and missed. And I know there was a reminder email that had gone out, you know, we were really going out of our way to try to, to try to work with the business. I think that's really something that's important to everyone. So that's kind of where we're at now.
Yeah, so we, we met with them last week, sorry, I just have our draft minutes in front of me. We met with them last week and, you know, we kind of agreed, just the, like Matt said earlier, the granting of the temporary permit. And that dates only, I don't know if this is important for you guys, but that dates only up to June 30th of this year. So after, you know, hopefully before then, we're gonna reevaluate, you know, what's said by the consultant and anything else from the town before we grant a permit moving forward for the rest of the year. But prior, again, prior to the permit being granted, Mr. Patel mentioned that the consultant is prob, is, the contract's coming soon. But the, we also did require proof of the training, so if they're having an event this week or this weekend, we haven't seen notice that their training has been scheduled yet to even first grant them the temporary permit for this upcoming weekend. So all of these, all of our requirements were due prior to granting a permit. So they're not, you know, yes, there's 30 days, but at 30 days, if we don't have, you know, if they scheduled with the consultant and we don't have good news back from the consultant, if they haven't completed the trainings, the food safety manager trainings by that time, we're then gonna be revoking it within 30 days.
So Betsy, just to clarify that, they don't have a permit today, they need to have the training certificates and the consultant, please? Or they have a permit today and they have 30 days to do it?
They need to have a contracted consultant, and they need to have scheduling of training for all of their staff.
So neither of which is satisfied right now, meaning they do not have a food permit in order for us to issue an all alcohol permit?
No, they don't.
Okay. So, you know, Mr. Patel, it puts us in a, in a tough position. You're, you're here again for your alcohol license, I think we've really tried to work with you and lay out everything that needs to be done. And, you know, we, we can't grant an all alcohol permit if you don't have a food permit and if you don't have your taxes paid. It's, it's really concerning to see three events scheduled for February without any permits in place to host these events, never mind, you know, the occupancy, I saw it advertised online as 50 to 3,000, you know, people. There, there's just a lot of things here, I think, that's concerning to me. And I think we've really given a lot, but I would hate for us to give again, and then something happens. And when we're talking, you know, the health and safety of patrons, I think last time Scott brought up even the safety and health, you know, of our own, you know, first responders, it, it really, in my opinion, has us backed in a corner, that I'm not sure what you expect us to do this evening.
So at this, all those events are not, they're just being advertised as if we get the permit. They're, they're promoted by us to customers that we know and that have done events at our place. So it's just to kind of open up the, the building back up and basically like advertisement. As far as the, you know, the, the food permit goes, as I said, we have the consultant coming tomorrow with, with four people that he's going to be training for the manager's license, as well as the contract. Like I said, he was supposed to meet today, but because of the storm, they had to be scheduled to tomorrow. So we already have that, obviously, in mind before any sort of functions that, you know, we had been planning.
And I do see the Chief Grace has his hand up, so I'll, I'll go over to Chief Grace next.
Yeah, just a quick question. Just, my concern here is that we, we have a lot of liquor establishments throughout the whole town. If every single one of them challenged us like this, we would be in serious trouble. I'm just giving a holistic, like, statement about this, this has been so much work. Further, I just want to highlight that if there's three events that are planned, there is, under the liquor regulation, a notification mandate that that business reach out to the police department and make the notification, so we can plan accordingly. The police department has not been notified about any upcoming events that they potentially may even hold, and I'm not even sure on the, when the first one was scheduled. If everything went.
It's three days from now, it's February 16th is, is what I had seen online. So, you know, also another thing, just because we can't, we can't talk outside of this, this board, so I want to let my fellow board members know, from an alcohol perspective too, it was interesting, sitting in the Board of Health meeting, that, you know, they had mentioned they have their six employees, and when it came to front of house, they said that they don't need to train them because they're, they use a staffing service. So, you know, in the past, we had been told everyone is tip certified and all that, but, you know, I'm very concerned from what we need to do in making sure people are trained correctly, it sounds like, or we were told at the Board of Health meeting, that a staffing agency is used to bring in, to bring in staff to, to staff the entire front of house. So, you know, let's say even if all that's satisfied, that has some concerns from our board.
That would be, that would be service staff. The, the bartender staff is tip certified. We just did it, I believe, within the past five months.
So the six?
It was a staff of 10.
Okay.
It was a staff of 12 people that we just did certifications.
The numbers just are different than what we heard in the Board of Health, and Betsy and Matt, you guys can correct me if you heard something different, but I thought I heard there's six full-time staff between the kitchen and management. So it's just, you know, it just comes back to, I'm just not clear on who's running these events, who's responsible, have you contracted out to someone else?
No, we are, we are responsible. The bartenders are not full-time, they only work when there's an event, so, but those are all the ones that we have already tip certified at our location. Like I said, it was about five months ago, we got 12 certifications done with our manager, as well as managers, as well as the bartenders. The, the service staff does change, we, you know, we do contract that out, so, but again, anybody that's handling liquor is, is certified.
All right, great. When I see Dennis has his hand up. You're on mute, Dennis.
Okay. So we spent over an hour on this the last time we, we met, and it doesn't appear again tonight, we're in any position to, to approve a liquor license, from what I'm hearing, the alcohol license. And so it's either, you want us to vote this down? Or are we in a position where it's, you, you're just not ready again? And it'll be willing to give you like another month. I think that's kind of where we're at.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it was miscommunication. If I had known that the health permit in hand was dependent on the consultant contract being handed out, I would have, you know, met with him last week. Again, that's not their fault, maybe it's miscommunication or misunderstanding on my part, that we, we just needed to have that consultant hired before any sort of event took place.
Right, right. I'll just reiterate, I don't, I don't think we're in any position, from what I'm hearing and what I heard at the last meeting.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, at this point, yeah, at this point, we can continue it, so we can get both of those things in hand, and then we can come back before the board.
Well, I'm putting it to Doc and Leah, do, do we want to do that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, you know, we may not continue it tonight, sir. So I have, there's two people with their hands up, I'll go to, to Doc first, and Paige also has her hand up.
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, you can hear me, great, yeah. I mean, I, I can't overemphasize the fact that, and I, I heard Leah say it earlier too, it just seems like you're always playing catch-up, and you're always miscommunicating, and I, I, I can't believe that our Board of Health, our Health Director, our, all our directors are giving you spot-on information that you need going forward, and you keep misunderstanding, or someone else got the information, and, you know, it goes back to the taxes, we're always chasing you guys for taxes, and I'm, for one, getting totally fed up with it. I'm off that, if Pink wants to go.
Well, in the, in the effort of time, and in light of what our Police Chiefs, who we all know is extraordinarily reasonable, and works with everybody, and has a very good grasp on all things alcohol in town, and given all the staff we have here, I would, again, prompt the board to consider not granting this permit to denying this permit. And, you know, they, there are avenues they could take from that point on, but I think to continue this, as, as Doc referenced, it's just, we, we just keep going through the same thing. And I think what our, our biggest concern, and Leah mentioned, is that something could happen, and we'd all be looking at each other, saying, oh, I wish we had realized, or if we had only known, and, and we do know. And, you know, this, this operation is a challenge, and I, I just, I think it's time to, to let it go and, and figure out, you know, they could take their next steps as needed, but I think this board should make the decision based on the input of staff at this point.
Yeah, so I would completely agree with that. Yeah. So I would completely agree with that. And, you know, I just, it, this is not something new as well. This has been going on since twenty-one, the taxes have been an issue since before COVID. So, you know, I just want just to reinforce how flexible I think we have all been. As I mentioned, I've been on the board for six years. I, I think we've been dealing with this for, for five of my six years in different, you know, stages, whether it's, you know, other events that happened and, you know, exits were blocked or, you know, overcrowding, parking lot issues, food. I mean, it, the list just goes on and on. So I think we've continued this a number of times. We've definitely shown willingness to work with the business, but every time, you know, you come in front of us, there's still a laundry list, not even one thing, you know, tonight, there's three things in front of us that I'm satisfied. So, I'm at the point that I would like to make, make a motion probably and I'll look to Pat to exactly what that needs to be to deny this. And if you want to come, you know, back in front of us or appeal this through the proper channels when, you know, you have all of your ducks in a row. Um, you know, it's, it's just every time there's a meeting with the board, there's a, there's a laundry list of things to do and it's, it's just a drain on resources.
I understand. And we would, you know, just ask for. Hello?
Leah, can you hear me?
Yeah, just raise your hand if you want to speak. I think that'll make it easier next time. And I think Doc has his hand up too. So Steph, go ahead.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but let me apologize. Um, I don't, can you guys see me?
No.
We can hear you.
I, I don't know how to do, I got you guys so I can, I can see everybody. I'm going to apologize. I don't know how to make myself so you guys can see me on my phone. I know how to do it on the laptop and I, for some reason I can't get in on the laptop. I've tried about a hundred times. So I, I didn't want to, you know, chime in when someone else was talking. I just, pretty much everything you said, Doc said, um, li- listen, this is a very, this, this board is, is, um, restaurant friendly, business friendly. Um, I always have a soft spot because this is what I do for a living. I have, I really questioned a lot the last time we met and as I was reading, um, the, what we had in board docs, um, what was going on, how much time? I, I want to be honest with you. I, I, the, I, you know, maybe every town might do things a little bit different, but I know they've said that they have owned a hotel before. Um, I think they should be very familiar with the processes of, um, board of health and, and the building, you know, and so I just want to let you guys know that as Doc put it, I, I think, I think enough is enough. I, I, I would support us making a motion to deny as well. And, uh, you know, and of course, if they want to come back, if they get every, get every, everything, as someone just said, ducks in a row, and they want to come back and reapply and everything is lined up, I think, I think we would be happy. But, um, I, I also wonder about. Because the last thing I would want to see, and we, we've all heard this happens, you know, you, people book something, maybe you get, they give a deposit, a wedding, whatever. And then all of a sudden, they, they're not licensed to hold the event. I, you know, um, is that going to be where people lose money? I, I think, I think it's a, a lose, lose right now. And, and so that, that's just my two cents. And if, if someone, uh, does make a motion, I would, I would support at this point, not, not reissuing the license.
Great. So with that, let's go over to Pat. Uh, Pat is our town council who's here with us and is very familiar with the situation as well. Um, so Pat, if you could help, help guide us, this is a public hearing. We, we may have to see if there's anyone else, you know, that has comment from the public. But I think if you can help guide us from here on what, what this motion looks like, we'd appreciate it.
Sure. Uh, good evening. What we have pending before the board tonight are in fact, two license renewals are, uh, alleged violations of the licenses. Number one, the restaurant all alcoholic beverage license. And then number two, a common vitriol license has been issued for this particular premises as well. The two hearings convened in this matter have evolved around a, of, an array of violations and non-compliance, uh, with applicable codes, permits, et cetera, that have persistently been plaguing the operations here at the restaurant. And I think the board of health has worked with the applicant, as has this board in terms of trying to pave the way for them to achieve what needs to be done to, um, bring the premises into compliance and to make it suitable for renewal of subject licenses. As we've discussed before, the renewal of the two licenses is by statute, a pretty pro forma situation unless the board finds cause for rejecting the application for renewal. So what the board would be voting upon tonight is, uh, whether or not to renew the restaurant all alcoholic beverage license and the common victuals license on the one hand, or alternatively to reject or deny the renewals for cause. Cause can be a number of things. Non-compliance with first and foremost here, the food standards or the food permits and approvals that are necessary in order to issue an alcoholic beverage license is, it seems to me is a critical factor here. And, uh, I do have the decision, uh, or the, the notice that the, the board of health issued on February sixth, and it does indicate clearly that Nervy Inc. shall be granted a permit until June thirty, twenty twenty-four, provided they comply with the following items. There are then three items listed which Matt and, uh, Chair Aloe have addressed tonight that haven't been complied with as of this date. So I would construe that notice to clearly indicate that the, uh, the, the perm, the food permit has not been issued as of this date and is not presently in place, nor will it be until those three conditions that the board of health voted upon or met. So there is no underlying food permit in place at this point in time. There are also a number of other issues, uh, relative to inspections that have been conducted at the property. Uh, the, uh, building commissioner has noted the architectural reviews and approvals that need to be completed. They still haven't been done. And again, relevant, the taxes are once again delinquent, uh, on the property. Uh, the, uh, that seems to be a cat we're chasing constantly. I mean, payments are made sporadically, but they are not made in due course when the tax installments are due. So in my view, those circumstances in and of themselves would legitimately constitute cause should the board choose to reject or deny the renewals, uh, of these two licenses, uh, for those reasons. Again, alternatively, the board could grant the renewal or, uh, approve the renewal of the licenses. And if it were to do so, I would suggest that it would be subject to very stringent conditions addressing each one of those points that I just noted. So those are in essence your options.
Thank you. And do we have to take those two motions separately or can we take them together? As.
I, I would do them, uh, separately, Leah, just for, for clarity in the record and, and so that the vote and the intent of the board is precise and clear.
Okay. And Doc, your hand is up. I'm not sure if it's newly up or if it's just still up from the last time.
No, no, no. Uh, it was up from the last time, but Steph really covered it. Let's, let's move this question. And the only thing I'd say, maybe even under discussion is, um, if they do come back in front of us, they better have all their ducks in a row.
But it is a public hearing. Do we have anyone from the public who is here that, that wants to raise their hand and maybe we'll just give it a little more time than if we were in the room, just to see Katie, is there anyone here from the public?
No one that has their hand raised.
All right. So with that, um, does the applicant have any, any final comments before we move to take a motion and a vote?
But I, yes, I mean, we would like to say, you know, uh, the town of Foxborough has been, you know, very helpful through this whole process. Uh, you know, going back to twenty twenty-one, it's just been, uh, very difficult to, um, you know, run a, run a place the size of this, uh, facility. And, uh, you know, we've, uh, we've done our best, uh, the last two years, it's been very difficult as we were under, you know, difficult cir- circumstances uh, with the COVID as well as, uh, uncertain things going on in our property. So, uh, you know, now we have focused and put all of our e- energy on, you know, running this place the way it needs to be. Uh, we've spent, you know, a lot of money clearing the taxes, which we're obviously owed, um, as well as, you know, spending money fixing and bringing the building up, the code for fire and building department. Um, and if you, you know, hopefully you guys can give us, uh, one more chance. If you continue it, we can come back with, you know, everything, all our ducks in a row as they, as he said.
Yeah. And I don't think we ever want to deny, um, a business. I think we've, we've, you know, shown here how hard we really try to work with people, but I think it comes to a point where we're unfortunately, um, not, not left with much of an, of, of, of an option or alternative. So Katie, there was no one from the public that had their hand up. So with that, I will move to close the public hearing and we'll take a roll call vote in the same order that we typically do if we're in the room. So just to give us some order there. So we'll roll call with each of the board to close the public hearing. Dennis, you start?
Yeah. Dennis, no.
And we're just moving to close the public hearing.
Okay, Dennis, yes.
Okay, Leah, yes.
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. And then with that, I will take the motion to reject or deny the renewal for cause for the common vitrular license for, um, Nervy Inc. doing businesses Olive and Mint Ambrosia at two Washington Street.
So to reject is what you meant, right, Leah?
Yep, yep. To reject or deny. Yep.
Oh, deny. Okay. Yep. Uh, second.
All right. Any further discussion among the board on the motion for the common vitrular license?
Leah, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Virtual, um, actual hand. So, uh, to the point earlier, um, I'm, I'm personally disappointed because I want businesses to succeed in Foxborough like we all do. Um, and I think the challenge for me is that, uh, if they had been candid with us, uh, on s- on these items and said, we need more time, whether it's for taxes or for this, and, and been open and, and asked for more help. Um, but at this point, it's, it's just, I have to agree with, with, um, the leaders in town and the stakeholders that, uh, it's enough is enough and we, and we need to move forward. Um, so that's just my perspective on it. Thank you.
Any other persons further discussion before we move forward to a roll call vote?
Yes, just quickly, um, I think the health and safety issues are always paramount, but, but coming back, there needs to be a payment system that works. Whether it's estimated payments, with automatic withdrawal from a, a banking account. We can't go on with the taxes not being paid, the water not being paid, and we're continually chasing that. We need a better system that works for the town and the taxpayers.
All right. So with that, let's move to a roll call vote. Um, and we'll start with Dennis again.
Deny.
So Leah, yes to deny or reject?
Uh, Mark, uh, yes to deny.
Definitely yes to deny.
Seth, yes.
All right. And then again, the second piece is the, um, the rejection or denial. So move to reject or deny the on, on premises, all alcohol beverage license for Nervy Inc. DB, DBA Olive and Mint Ambrosia at two Washington Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. So we'll do a roll call vote again, Dennis.
Dennis, deny.
Leah, yes.
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Seth, yes.
All right. So with that, I, I hope, um, I, I hope you guys can get everything together and come back, you know, in front of us or in front of the ABCC and prove that you've been able to rectify all of these reasons that we unfortunately had to move forward to, to deny for cause. Um, anything else that any of the department heads or Pat has to add? I mean, there are multiple events being advertised. I hope you understand just, I don't think it needs to be said, but you, you aren't in a place to move forward with those events that you're advertising and selling tickets for un- until this is, this is remedied. And then even though there's stuff that needs to be done with the police, um, and such to properly run these events.
Yes, we understand.
Okay.
What, what is the, um, what is the way to come back before this board?
Pat, I'll let you take that one to say what the path, if you can help. Maybe they need to contact an attorney for their guidance, but I don't know if you have any direction. You're on mute. Sorry. You're on mute, Pat.
Anytime, uh, a licensing authority takes action relative to a license, such as the denial of the renewals here, there is a right to appeal, uh, to the ABCC. That right to appeal is provided in, uh, uh, chapter one thirty-eight, section sixty-seven. Uh, short of an appeal, uh, the licensee would have to reapply anew to this board for the subject licenses and meet any and all requirements, uh, of the town, uh, in that regard. So, he. And I would suggest they consult with counsel to get proper advice.
Okay.
We truly wish you the best of the luck and it's, you know, not what anyone wanted to do, but I, I hope we can move forward in a way that's that, that works for everyone.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, um, we'll, we'll get everyone off of this item and then the next item is, Doc, do you want me to keep going just because I can see the hands or can you see the hands? You let me know.
I, I, uh, I can see the hands, um, but you know, you're the one that sees everybody. Yeah. Why don't you keep going? You're doing a great job. Yeah, your instincts are good.
All right, great. Um, so up next, we're, we're a little bit behind. So my apologies. We have a change of manager and change of hours application for Crazy Axes Foxborough. Doing businesses Crazy Axes at two O two Patriot Place. I see we have Mr. Miller here. We recognize him as counsel. Um, and I see we have David here. Do we have, um, is, we, we're not going to have Adam, right? We just have. All right, great. So, um, do you have everyone that you need here, Mr. Miller?
Yes. If David is present, we have everyone we need.
Yes, you do. All right, great. So I think we're all pretty familiar. We're here for the change of manager application. We'll, you know, we'll hear from you on that. And then also as a second motion, we're here to review and approve, uh, potentially the change of hours as well. So go ahead.
Thank you. Um, good evening, members of the board. Um, my name is Tom Miller from McDermott Quilty Miller in Hanley in Boston on behalf of the licensee Crazy Axes. Uh, as previously stated, I'm joined by the, one of the owners and the proposed manager of record, David Kelicowski. Uh, just so the board is aware, David is a US citizen. He is tip certified. He has experience in the food and beverage industry. He has been with this licensee since, uh, prior to opening, uh, for its entire existence. Um, he is familiar with the laws of the Commonwealth, the rules of the ABCC and the town for the sale and service of alcohol. Um, so he is a, a qualified and experienced, um, manager. Uh, we feel he, he, uh, meets the requirements and will, um, continue to operate this licensee in the manner in which the board has become accustomed uh, and the community has come to enjoy. Uh, in addition to that, application for a change of manager, we have also applied for a change of hours to allow them to open at ten AM on Sundays. Um, this application for the change of hours comes at the request of their customers, uh, who want to access and enjoy food and, uh, beverage prior to their previous, uh, opening time on Sundays at one in the afternoon. Um, in addition, this will allow the licensee to, um, take advantage of the increased traffic that operating in Patriot Place on a Sunday, uh, at that earlier hour would provide them. Um, while they're open for those additional hours, they're going to provide their full menu. Kitchen will be open, operating full menu. Um, in addition, they're working on adding different coffee options, pastries, baked goods, uh, items like that to meet, you know, the anticipated demand for a slightly different type of, um, food options for those coming in at that time of day. Uh, in addition, possibly, um, adding kind of a, a more brunch style drink menu with mimosas and things like that for customer who are planning on coming in and taking advantage of that earlier hour. Um, we want to thank you for hearing these applications today and happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, great. Um, anything else that you have to add, Katie? Just a reminder, this does have the beer wall. I don't think there's been any, there's been, there's been no issues. I mean, I've gone in, I've seen David, I've seen you there. I think the couple of times I've been in, um, are you also, so you're requesting the alcohol also to start at ten AM? Do we need anything separate for that or? Or is like it, it's just changing the hours, which needs to have a change of hours of service as well?
So we we applied to change the hours of both the the common vic and the alcohol license um and, you know, through the appropriate uh application process, um which is up to, you know, which is at the board's discretion.
And I just don't see that letter like we normally would for that one, Katie. That's why where I wasn't just, I wasn't sure if we were
It's the last two packet, uh last two pieces of paper on in the packet.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's just not on item three point two, gotcha.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it's it's a second motion. So I did, um, it's that one packet in three point one, but it's the last two pages. So that was just the overall application.
I don't have any questions on this one. I don't know if anyone from the board does. Um, you know, I know you said you're gonna have food. Um. But I don't have.
Full menu.
Anyone on the board have any questions? Otherwise, I'll move forward to motions.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay.
Just one thing to add, um I think this is um a great idea for the change of hours because it allows for us to not miss, you know, a letter that's submitted at the beginning of every season. Um, it's kind of just blanket it if it's good for their business. It just is one last step for um me to try to remember if I don't hear from those Patriot Place businesses. Um, so that's just from an administrative outlook um of how it is helpful.
All right, great. So um that that's great. Seth has his hand up. Yes, Seth.
Excellent. Um, any commentary from our uh safety department um leads that are on the call or anyone from Town Hall? Everyone's comfortable, okay.
We've got Chief Grace here. Chief Grace, do you have anything?
Uh, no concerns at all. Uh professionally run business, we've had no issues. Um, and as Katie said, I think this will help with those one day um requests. So we're we're good.
That's what I wanted to hear.
All right, great. So with that, I I'm just gonna have a um a couple of separate motions if you could just hang with us. So I we do have to do a roll call for each vote as well. So move to approve the change of manager application for Crazy Axes Foxborough LLC, Doing Businesses Crazy Axes at two O two, two O two Patriot Place. From Adam Olivera to David Kilkowski. Sorry if I butchered your name there. Any second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, roll call, we'll start with Dennis.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes.
Mark, yes. Stephanie, you're muted.
She's trying. I can see she's looking for the button. It looks like, okay, she was on her phone too, but now she's just.
There we go.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. And then our second motion is regarding the hours. So move to approve the change of hours application for Crazy Axes Foxborough LLC, Doing Businesses Crazy Axes at two O two Patriot Place. From Monday through Thursday from eleven A M to eleven P M and Friday and Saturday from eleven A M to twelve A M and Sunday from ten A M to eleven P M.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call, Dennis first.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes.
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yeah.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. And it's been a great uh addition to to businesses in town. I know I went over school vacation. Everyone, no matter the age, had had a blast. So um much continued success, best wishes. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, so now we're just gonna give it another second so we can switch. I think we have Mr. Yukna who's joined us. We have Mark Craig who is has joined us and we're just waiting for some folks from Crazy Axes to drop off. All right, so the next item is the Permanent Municipal and School Building Committee. Um so the Taylor School Statement of Interest. Uh, you may have heard of this before. Unfortunately, we are back on this one. So we are here again this evening to uh make a motion to to move forward with that that third statement of interest. So um, Mr. Yukna, are you going to?
Sure. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay. Um, so as Leah just stated, this is uh our third attempt at this. Um, the MSBA requires that each time you put in an application for a project um that there is a vote of both the school committee, which has already taken place uh in our last meeting, uh which they voted to approve uh and support um the the renovation and expansion uh plan for the Taylor School. And so this is a a similar vote that we're asking that the board take um to support uh the project. It doesn't commit the town to a financial obligation at this point. Um, it just says that the, you know, everybody is in line and understands that this is uh this application is being placed. Um, if and when they do uh vote to approve it, which would not be until December of next year, uh at that point, then you have a decision relative to the financial side of it, and the town has a decision to make as far as moving the project forward. So at this point, it is strictly a vote of confidence, I would call it. Um, and that you understand that the project is similar to the borough in that it's a uh full renovation of the building and a potential expansion um to correct the issues with the gym um that we currently have on the layout.
All right, great. And I think as everyone knows, the Taylor School is the the last school building that hasn't hasn't been renovated. So I think we're all, you know, hopeful for a for a positive decision in December for this one. So um with that, I'll make a motion to approve the third S O I for the Taylor School to be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Um, I know we've gone through this before and and Mr. You can have just ran us through kind of the cliff notes, but any other discussion from anyone on the board? All right, so with that, we'll take a roll call to um vote on the motion that's that's on the floor.
Dennis, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yeah.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. So keep us posted, Bill. We're we're hopeful the third top third tries the charm.
Yeah, I hope so too. Thank you.
All right, great. And I think some folks are gonna stay on the line for the next item, which is a community center discussion. Um, we are joined now by Mark Craig, as I mentioned. We still have um Pat Costello on the line, Town Council. We have Chief Kellyher, Marie, we have Chief Grace, um Katie Lang, Paige, and the rest of the board. So um I can kind of kick this this one off, and this is something that's that has kind of come up quickly. Um, because there's a particular building in 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 the town that has come on the the open market for sale. Uh, we've been kicking around discussions, you know, on a new community center for quite a while now. We know that it's definitely, you know, a big priority in town for a number of different groups, not only just, you know, the seniors, but also um recreation and just the community at at large. But, you know, we've been trying to figure out, well, what do we do? We have the T- Taylor School, you know, that needs the renovation we just talked about, the senior center, you know, needs a new home. It would be great if it was a community center um and the D P W building. So there's there's a lot of competing priorities in town and um when this building came on the market, um I think that a couple of people were were excited to look inside. Um, and a number of us did go and take a peek. And once we toured the building, we're we're kind of um excited to to maybe talk more about it. And that's where we're at now today is to bring this to the board. We won't discuss specifics because we're able to do that in executive session if we wanted to move forward with an offer. Um, but the purpose of the board discussing it tonight is to kind of present the idea and get an appetite from the board if we wanted to take this into executive session to potentially move forward with evaluating this. Now, the purchase of property by a municipality is, you know, obviously a complex process with offers and purchase of sales. And, you know, there's lots of different procurement requirements and town meeting votes that are required. So this is really just a first step to kick off the discussions and see if the board is aligned and supporting this. Um, you know, for me to continue to move forward, working with um, you know, Mark and Paige and Pat and and both chiefs to see if this is something that the town has an appetite for um and to make potentially work. So with that, I just kind of went on quickly, Mark, but anything else? You know, to add to this at this level?
The only thing I think it's um poignant to note, like, so we've had a few tours of the building. Uh, at this point, Scott Shippey, Carl Fuller, Tony Masali, Bill Yukna, you yourself, Leah, Chief Keller, Paige, Renee from Rec, Heather Harding, Elaine Repoff, we've all kind of toured the building. It's it's the it's seventy six Main Street. It's the church of, well, the former Church of Latter Day Saints uh that they have vacated the building. It's about a seventeen thousand square foot building. It's built by all account, uh very, very well.
So so that's where we're at. And we would have, we would hold an executive session on February twenty seventh for the board to talk specific strategy. If we wanted to move forward, um, I see Mr. Yukna has his hand raised as well, Bill.
So I think it's important to understand a couple of things here. The if we were going to build our own building and we've obviously had uh cost estimates done on that, um and that building, quite honestly, wasn't quite as large as what we're looking at here. Uh, the number of new construction, uh uh as an example, on the borough uh was almost five hundred dollars a square foot. So um, basically, this is an opportunity to acquire uh about three point six acres of land with a building that as is is usable. Um, other than the fact that we would need to potentially add an elevator for uh A D A accessibility uh and potentially fix a few other minor A D A requirements, but the building itself is is phenomenally well-built. I'll give that um them credit for that. And it lays out extremely well uh for what we would want to use it for. So this may be the one opportunity with all, even all the other things that are going on. This may be one opportunity to actually do a a project of a community center at a reasonable cost uh far more reasonable than if we were going to do it on our own and build. So I I want the kind of the community and the the board to understand that this is this may be a once in a lifetime opportunity uh for us to move forward on. Um, and and they, and I really can't even think of another situation where this would happen like this, so.
I think that's summarize why a couple of us that have been through are, you know, really excited. Um, it's a way to get it to get it done, get it done a lot cheaper than building something. And then also, we could, you know, the property that the senior centers in now, we could look at, you know, disposing of that and 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 potentially selling it. I there's a lot, I don't want to, you know, say what we would do because there's a lot to figure out. You know, this is really, does the board want to move forward at looking at this? And to me, I think it was a no brainer and it was something that I was even more excited about after, you know, getting in there. I know right now parking's a huge problem over at Central Street and, you know, there's there's ample parking here. It just really, you know, with with a couple of really minor things that are, you know, probably to be figured out exactly. Um it it really seems like a no brainer in talking to Marie and others, you know, I think we have a way to to execute this, um should we wish to proceed. So with that, Dennis, you know, we're not gonna talk about like specifics about like purchase price or any of that would save that for our executive session. That is something we can go into executive session for. But any other comments? Or questions?
Yeah, I mean, no, I'm not gonna get into that. I I know over the past several years, the idea of a community center coupled with the senior center is a huge issue with the community. And I think they would receive this unless I'm, you know, wrong, which I don't think I am, very, very positively. And it would address something that we're gonna have to address, I think, at some point anyway, because there's been somewhat of a commitment Bill Keegan uh to do a community center. So I would strongly support um uh, you know, looking at this further and seeing what we can do to uh potentially make this happen because I think would be well received.
Seth?
Yep, thank you. Um, couple of quick things. Um, first, how did how did um this show up on our radar and and we began to generate the interest here?
So it's it's listed on the open market for anyone to see or buy, you know, on M L. And you can drive by and see the sign. So I think, you know, just when it came up on the market, I think a couple of different people started and thought, huh, this could be, this could be good. Um, so that that's really where where it came from. But, you know, we don't even know if we'll be able to move forward, you know, because this isn't, it's not like the board, you know, says yes and we proceed. This is just to put our our hat in the ring, really, to to be able to report that we don't know who they'll sell to, what it will sell for, any of those details yet.
Excellent. You have something to add to that, Mark?
No, they covered it perfect.
Okay. And then the second thing, um, thinking ahead, uh there was mention of an elevator. What else would we do as far as work ahead of time to understand what the requirements would be to meet um all the criteria required for a a a center like that, a community center, senior center, what have you, to make sure that the doors are wide enough, um, everything meets is up to code. And I'm just trying to think about preventing any surprises. There will be stuff that comes up, but elevator, what else, what can we do to to plan?
Yeah, so I I'm sure Bill will comment on this, but it's, to be honest, going through the the space, it's very little modifications. Things like handicapped accessible bathrooms, there are some, there are some on each floor. We'd want to add some more. There's plenty of handicapped accessible parking. There's a ramp going into what would probably end up being the, you know, the the main entrance. Uh, it's really, it's pretty much paint and and some minor improvements to make it, you know, ready to move in. But I'm sure Bill has his hand up, so.
Yeah, Bill has his hand up. And the good thing is, is we have all the experts on staff here. Um, you know, from building inspectors to all that. So why don't I go to Bill? Just does yours tie into that, Bill?
Yeah, so I I think uh from our perspective, there is going to be a uh a allowed inspection period as well by the sellers. Um, and at that point in time, quite honestly, I think the building department uh building committee and and whoever else is necessary will walk through, fire department will walk through, make all of our notes on any issues. Um, the elevator is just an obviously obvious one because it's a two-story uh unit. So we know that that's, you know, but we also know how to price that. So that's, we're not too concerned about that. So but as far as, you know, going through it from a fire safety point of view, going through through it from a structural point um and being very confident, you know, that we know what's going on there. It is currently on its own uh public, I mean, a private septic, uh so obviously having to do a review on that as well. Um, so there's a few things we would have to do. We understand that, but, you know, it's just common like we would do with any of our buildings in town.
And and Bill, thank you for that. Any state or federal con- uh considerations that that you're aware of at this point?
No, there's nothing.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Seth?
Um, so um, two things, um I from what I've heard is very little. It sounds very exciting. Um, so basically what we would just need to do is, you know, w- once we have an executive session and and have some discussion about particulars, basically what we'd like to try to do is get it on this warrant. So do we just need a majority vote at town meeting to to move forward if if everything lines up right?
So we there's a few steps before that. Luckily, we've got this sort of timeline. The offers aren't being looked at until at least March first. So um you guys are meeting at the end of February to if if you so choose to put an offer in. Um, and then if the offer is accepted, um it would go to to town meeting. So we have a few different timelines before. We did put a um a draft article in town meeting for both the sa- uh purchase of the of the property and also the the sale of the of the current senior center too.
Okay, great. So so uh as a board, we could um make a decision to make an offer. And then of co- course, it would have to be okay to town meeting. Um, and do you think um would it be a good idea, like, I know this kind of, from what I heard, this all just kind of came together very quickly and and, you know, um great that Leah could join. Um, so if we're gonna go into some type of executive session, we pick a date, um, would it be maybe a good idea to see if we could also um put a meeting on the books and see if it's possible if the board could um go and see the property as well?
Uh, I can I can contact the Realtor. Like, like Bill said, they're holding uh the week of the nineteenth, which is, I guess, next week to have inspections. Um, and the Realtor has been great so far. We've been able to schedule a couple of different tours and he's he's been great. So I'm sure that that's, if you guys are interested in that, we can arrange that or I can arrange that.
Yeah, well, and you know something, I I think, obviously, Mark, you 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 know the type of space that you're looking for and what what you would have liked to, even if we were gonna to build a new community center. So um, I mean, I'm okay with with when when you have a big smile on your face like you do right now. Um, I I I realize that this this is probably a pretty special property. But just just so that, you know, we uh cross our Ts and dot our Is, if, you know, the board lays eyes on it too, but um, it there's a lot of exciting discussion about this. So um, yeah, it's it's um, it's good. I think Dennis kind of, I think, said it. I think the community would embrace this. It's a way to get something that um a lot of people are excited about and at a reasonable price. So, yeah. I'm all I'm all for it.
All right, great. And Dennis, any last comments?
No, I'm just gonna echo what Stephanie said. I I had the same reaction. I'd I'd love to tour it. And there's some other board members that probably haven't seen it. I'd, I'd love to tour it and there's some other board members that probably haven't seen it, uh, as well. So maybe there could be a group of us really tour it, uh, next week would be, uh, fine with me sometime.
All right, great. So as I mentioned, it, this will be an extremely complicated process. You know, there's things that have to go our way in order to make this happen. So by no means is this like we're moving forward, but at least it, we, we wanted to get the board together, make sure we're all on the same page that we would like to explore this and move forward. Um, so that would really be my motion, you know, would be that the, that, you know, the board, you know, authorizes everyone to kind of move forward and look at this. And then we reconvene in executive session, maybe six o'clock the hour before our meeting on the twenty seventh. So with that, um, Pat, Paige, anything else to add? You know, Bill, before we just go out and take a roll call on that?
No, I think it's been covered and, um, I think it'll be a good opportunity. I think it'd be great for the board members to see it and we can work, uh, with Katie and Mark to arrange that. Um, but no, we're taking one step at a time, doing our due diligence and, um, you know, making sure it's in the best interest of the community. But like everyone said, it's certainly, um, so far looking like a good opportunity and, uh, you know, at a fraction of the costs, um, that a building a new facility would be, so.
Yeah, and Pat, I, I, I had a meeting with Pat on Monday and, you know, Pat has gone through this in a couple of communities. So it made me feel a lot more at ease after talking to him that he truly understands the process. Because, you know, it is complicated. Maybe Pat, you can talk about that procurement step, you know, specifically. And just anything else to offer to this board that maybe you and I have covered that they haven't heard yet?
Sure, thank you. Uh, I, I think what we wanted to accomplish as a primary objective tonight has clearly been accomplished. I mean, the board seems very much interested in pursuing this opportunity. So I, I think now we can move together as a team to, to take whatever steps necessary to, to, to put our hat in the ring, so to speak. Um, from a procurement perspective, whenever a town, uh, acquires interest in real property or disposes of an interest in real property, under chapter thirty B, we, we technically have to go through a, a, a formal procurement process. There is an exception however, with regard to the acquisition of real property, uh, which provides that if the town, which would be through this board, makes a determination that this property has unique characteristics that justify us waiving or, uh, foregoing the procurement process. We would, uh, you, you, your board would vote to, uh, establish that uniqueness. It's called the uniqueness determination. We would then, we, uh, filed that uniqueness determination in the central register, which is required by law. And we cannot enter into a binding agreement to purchase the property for at least thirty days after that uniqueness determination is filed. But it's nothing more than a routine, regularly followed, uh, procedural step. So there's nothing out of the ordinary in doing that. But we would take that into consideration and we can discuss that in more detail during the executive session.
All right, great. So with that, I'll start with roll call with Dennis.
Dennis, uh, Dennis, yes?
Yes?
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Did you state, Leah, what we were agreeing to?
Yeah, I, I motioned to move forward, that we're all interested in moving forward with this. I'd said that before I went to Pat, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. We didn't, we didn't second it, I don't think, but I, I said.
Okay, yeah, you're right, you're right. We didn't. So go ahead. Well, we seconded and revoked that.
I will, I will second that.
Sorry, thank you for calling that out. Let's just go back around, Dennis.
Go ahead, Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes?
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
And Seth, yes.
All right, great. And thank you to everyone, um, in town hall that has really kind of jumped on this quickly and spent a good amount of time, you know, just putting heads together to see if this could work, how, how it works and what the path forward even looks like. So I, I appreciate everyone's time on that. More to come. All right. So with that, we are going to move on to another piece of property. Um, the disposition of real property at fourteen Community Way, which is the former Pratt School. So I'll turn it over to you, Paige, for that one.
Sure. So as you are aware, um, we've been in the process of disposing of fourteen Community Way Pratt School. And we've now, um, reached a point where, um, I believe Pat, you're, if you're still here, we're, we're, we're looking for you to sign the deed. Um, and to vote to go ahead and dispose of this property. We have, um, come to sort of the end of the process and we are ready to sell it. Uh, we do have original deeds for board members to sign, obviously being, uh, on Zoom, we're not going to be able to do that. So we probably asked that you come in, you know, over the next few days to town hall and sign the document so that we can go ahead and, and pass that on so it can get recorded. Pat, did I miss anything on that?
Uh, no, you, you covered it, Paige. Um, as the board knows, we, we did, again, pursuant to the Uniform Procurement Act, uh, undertake a pro- procurement process to dispose of this property. We did, uh, receive a proposal from an individual who, who, uh, owns other property in the vicinity. And the purchase price, uh, through that procurement process is eighty-five thousand and two dollars. So that's what we will be selling the property for. We have worked out the details of the deed with, uh, council for the, uh, purchaser. Everything else has been taken care of, should be a very straightforward and clean closing. And I expect it will, it will take place imminently, if not this week.
All right, great. Appreciate that. So moved that the board approve and execute the quick clean deed prepared by town council, transferring the town's interest in the real property, identified as fourteen Community Way Foxborough Assessor's Map ID ninety-seven Lot ten to Joseph J. Durba for consideration in the amount of eighty-five thousand and two dollars. And to authorize the town manager to execute any additional documents necessary to affect the closing of the transaction. Any further discussion?
Hey, um, Leah, I would just mention that, uh, that, that building had been sitting there for years, sort of falling apart, vacant, um, not adding any real value. Um, and that was just a year ago. We started looking at that and, um, so that was, uh, we moved really quickly, um, and efficiently on that. Um, so, um, appreciate all the work that went into making that happen. Um, and I think we're in a good spot now, so.
Agreed. And just to remind you, Paige, someone, you know, had asked if we could ever rescue the Pratt School sign. At that point, it was already included in the listing, so we weren't able to remove it from the property. But, um, when you do talk to Mr. Durba, it could be good just to mention that again, although he can do what he may. Um, it, it's worth just bringing it up again.
Sure thing.
All right, great. So we had a motion, a second, further discussion. So I think we're ready for roll call, starting with Dennis.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes?
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. Thanks.
So if you all could just come on into town hall, we have it, um, on the counter, uh, uh, town manager's office. If you get a chance to swing by, that would be great. The sooner we get it signed, the sooner we can close and get our money.
And get it back on the tax roll as well. So double win there. Um, so just moving on, we're skipping the DPW update, um, correct, Paige? So I, I'm sure everyone can understand that Chris and team have been working all day with the storm that didn't turn out to quite be the storm that we expected it to, but still it's been a, a long day. So to ask them to come in and start presenting at eight o'clock, um, with National Grid just seemed, just seems like a, like a tough thing to do to them, given the weather. So, um, we're postponing that one for a future meeting. Do we have a date for that yet? Are we still working on a new date?
We're working on a new date. We have to, um, coordinate with National Grid. And just so you know, they would have probably been unable to attend anyway, um, you know, with any sort of storm. They had put us on notice that if their call, emergency center is open, they might not have been able to come. So we might've gotten Chris tonight, but we probably wouldn't have gotten National Grid and we opted to just give everybody a chance. Of course, we did a lot, everybody did a lot of things last night, um, thinking this was going to be a big storm. And, um, it wasn't as big as we all thought. But like you say, I know I was texting with Chris Gallagher at like five twenty this morning. So I'm sure he was up all night watching the weather. Um, so it's good to give them up. But we will, um, announce it as soon as we can, um, confirm National Grid.
Up, Steph, you're on mute.
By any chance, Paige, um, do, do we know, usually, um, I was kind of, my dad had doctor's appointments today, so I was going all day. I never really looked at Facebook or anything. Do, did, uh, anybody lose power around town?
With this. I haven't heard. I'm, I'm not on Facebook, so I have, but I, we didn't, I didn't get any angry emails. So sometimes I do, but I hadn't heard anything.
Well, because you know what, even, even though it wasn't, um, the accumulation that they had said, um, it was very heavy and wet. You know, which, you know, sometimes they're on, you know, on the lines and, and, you know, we had a little bit of wind. And so, um, I, I was, I was thinking to myself, i- if, if National Grid had come tonight, I'm like, maybe it wouldn't have been a, a, a very unhappy meeting for them if, if we had had some issues today around town. I was just curious if any, you know, if you got any phone calls or if anybody, um, if we had lost power at all. Oh, actually, she, Kelly is there, he will probably know.
Yeah, there were, to my knowledge, there were no issues. I, I spoke to National Grid a few times, uh, throughout the day. We had no, no reports of any power outages, no issues. So it was a, it was the storm that wasn't.
That's right. Yeah. And the roads looked beautiful. I know I was out a couple of times today and they did, they did a great job. Dennis has his hand up.
I can hear Chris Gallagher's guys and gals out in the street right now, heavy equipment, getting the work done.
Yeah, no problem with power, but the, my, my wifi all day was, was really off. I'm on my third device yet to get online. So I don't know if I had wifi problems.
No, I work at home and I, I didn't have, I was good all day.
I wonder if it's not like kids home from school.
I should have said, I should have said I had no wifi, not just that I am, I am challenged technology wise. I should have used your excuse that better.
All right. So with that, um, well, let's move forward to the budget. Just, we're actually, oh my gosh, we're back two minutes ahead of schedule with the cancellation of that item. So, um, on that, we have the town manager recommended budget presentation. I know the budget books were, uh, available for pickup a week or so ago. And I'm sure everyone's picked up their budget book and had a chance to review that.
Great. So I'll, I'll get going. Um, I do have Marie here with, I mean, there she is. Um, so she's going to run through some slides, but first I thought I'd give over an overview. I know a lot of you will have already heard some of this or read some of this, but just for the folks watching from home, that I give an overview of our FY twenty-five budget. Um, so we're pleased to, to submit the proposed budget for the town manager. Um, and I really want to thank everybody, our, all our departments, uh, you know, as you know, we have many meetings with all the department heads and, um, finance team in particular work so hard on this. It's, um, you know, my first time going through it on this side and seeing the amount of effort and the intricacies involved is, is really impressive. Um, if you recall from our December fifth summit, the goal for, to restrict spending was three point five percent. Uh, we communicated that to the select board, school committee and the AdCom. Um, actually it's the, the select board that sort of sets that policy, but it was on the recommendation of the finance department. Um, and in aggregate, we have been able to present a budget that meets the three point five percent guideline. Um, however, in order to meet that, we did have to make some significant cuts and we were not able to, um, fund any general fund positions. Um, to note, there were, um, last year when we discussed, um, with AdCom and through the whole budget process, there was a proposal to again bring forward two firefighters and two police officers. Um, we were unable to fund those two new firefighters this year and, um, we weren't able to fund one police officer. One of them had already been funded through school, uh, fifty percent from charter, fifty percent through, um, for Foxborough Public. So, um, the, the net loss there at the police department was one. Um, there was also a request from the DPW to have a, a DPW engineer. And the library was seeking to move their teen librarian from part-time to full-time. And I was unable to include those in my recommended budget. Um, we are waiting for, uh, a big number, which is the, uh, liabilities, um, health insurance and property liability insurance. Um, but that said, we are not necessarily believing that those, whatever, that those numbers come in, in, if there are savings, we don't expect them to be sufficient to cover the cost of these positions. And we'll get a bit in, into that a bit more, um, coming up. The current budget does still include eight hundred thousand dollars of free cash, um, which is in alignment with the financial, uh, free cash financial policy, um, which allows up to a million dollars in free cash of the operating budget. Um, now we have been in the past trying to reduce that by a hundred thousand dollars a year and we, we did not achieve that this year. That said, it's important to note that, um, the debt for the, the Borough School and the town hall projects, those are carried within our operating budget. That's not something you typically see in most town operating budgets is carrying the debt service. So, um, the debt service for that makes up one point eight three million dollars from out of our operating budget. So right off the top, we're, we're paying for that debt. Um, so we do think that, you know, continuing to reduce the free cash dependency by a hundred thousand dollars a year might be a challenge while we're dealing with that, um, the debt service we're carrying. Um, so we do carry many, you know, prudent financial planning measures. And, um, we have been, we have been able to carry the three point five percent. Um, but as we mentioned, there are needs that are not being met. Um, that said, and we know, we do know those positions are needed, but right now the revenues are not supporting, um, those additional requests. So, and we are, you know, committed, we've been, the, through the policy and through the discussions of this policy board, there's been a desire to reduce the dependency on free cash and overlay surplus. So we are trying to, um, respect that and that's why the budget, um, it does not reflect the new positions. Um, and we should note that, that, you know, these numbers are early. Um, we do have a few numbers out there that we're waiting for and with the state hasn't been completely finalized and, and the liability and insurance. Um, so there, this will change, this is preliminary, but this is our, what we have today. And this is what we've had to do in order to balance the budget. Um, with that, I could take questions or if we want to let Marie go into specifics, she has a PowerPoint presentation for everyone to see. To get, that'll give you a much more detail on where we stand today.
Go ahead, Seth.
Good, thank you. Um, quick, quick high level. Um, one thing I always struggle with when I'm reviewing the budget is that we, um, we have a twenty twenty-four budget line item. And we have, um, the proposed, which is this year's twenty twenty-five. Um, just for, for clarity, this, this budget is, or this budget proposal is informed by twenty twenty-four actual receipts and expenses. Is that, is that fair? That we're thinking about how things are coming in this year and what our expectations are this year and how that impacts our trend going forward into twenty twenty-five?
I'll let Marie chime in, but I do believe that yes, it takes into account what we have now and then some conservative projections. But Marie, do you want to confirm that?
Yes, on the revenue side. So we start off with, when we set our tax recap in the fall, that's essentially our starting point. Um, so we use those numbers for the projections and adjust as we go through the, the process. And then on the expense side, the budget obviously is what the current department's budget is.
Yeah. It's, and it's hard, I know we've done this several years and it's hard not to know what our expectations are for the current year and because they're not here, like a, a forecast for current year. But I'm confident knowing that you, now that you're telling me this, that we're using current year and what you're seeing and what the expectations are to inform the proposal. So I'm also, thank you.
Dennis has his hand up. Let's take Dennis's comments and then we'll let Maria, if she has her PowerPoint, go into the PowerPoint and then we'll come back and see if there's any questions or comments from the board or other, um.
Well, I, I thought it was, uh, uh, Marie and, and Paige to, to agree that you were able to participate. I thought it was very well done, organized, it, it read well. I've gotten through about half of it. The notes are very, very helpful. So it was really a great effort and, and a great product that I, that I was looking at. To Seth's point, um, I think it's the run rate. You know, we don't have much of a run rate with the FY twenty-four budget in terms of where we're going to end up year-end. And that flows right into the baseline of the FY twenty-five request. So I have some questions as we go through the budget in terms of, you know, supporting a run rate that doesn't look like it's going to come close to the FY twenty-five request. Of course, we don't have the run rate to assess that, so that'll be a question. I think there's some conservatism on the revenue side. And again, I'll raise those points when we start to go, go through the budget at the, uh, the, uh, uh, select board level. But a good job, well done. I think there's some conservative, I think there's some opportunities. And certainly there's some challenges in terms of the positions, uh, that weren't, uh, able to be funded, particularly in the public safety areas.
And if I could just, before Marie starts, I want to point out that for anyone watching at home, the budget book is available on the town website. So if, if, you know, you're just tuning in and you want to see what we're talking about, um, it is available on the website. Uh, and, uh, is very helpful, as Dennis mentioned, provides a lot of information. So Marie.
All right. So I'll share my screen. Oh, says, uh, host disabled screen sharing. All right. So I'll share my screen. Oh, says, uh, host disabled screen sharing.
Katie will be on that momentarily.
Sorry, should be all set, Marie. Should be good to Marie.
All right. Can y'all see that?
We can. Thank you.
I have two screens going, so my apologies if I screw up.
We see the budget presentation, so I think it's the right one.
You see the status of the revenues?
We can.
Okay. All right. So, um, I will try not to bore you all, um, but I will be getting into, um, some of the details. Um. So this here is a snapshot of, uh, where we are with our current fiscal year revenues. So in the chart, you could see, uh, so the budgeted estimate, this is, these are the numbers that were used to set our tax rate. And then the total collected is where we are as of today. Then to the far right, you'll notice the percentage collected. So, uh, property taxes were about just shy of seventy five percent collected. Uh, local receipts were seventy four point one percent collected. And state aid were fifty seven point one percent collected. I do want to note on the state aid side that, um, we've noticed that they have not been sending us our charter school reimbursement. And we did reach out to them, um, just to find out what's going on. Um, that's why you'll notice that that number is a little on the lower side. But we expect to hear back from someone, uh, fairly quickly. Uh, overall, general fund, um, is seventy two point one percent collected. Now, we, uh, compare where we are today, um, to a year ago when we did this presentation. So our local receipts are essentially, uh, five hundred thousand or six point three percent higher than at this time last year. Uh, overall, general fund collections are three point six million or six point eight percent higher. Then at this time last year, um, you know, property taxes and state aid revenues, uh, those remain, you know, stable. I do want to note that, you know, some of our revenues do come in later in the fiscal year. Um, for example, our large motor vehicle excise commitment, that will usually get billed in, um. Late February, sometimes early March. It all depends on when we get that commitment from the registry of motor vehicles. Um, but we do have a commitment of two point five million going out soon. So you should all expect to. Receive your, uh, excise tax bills for your vehicles shortly. Now, if we move on to the expenses, um. So once again, I mean, this is the budget that was approved at last year's town meeting. Bottom line eighty four point four million, um, so far, and I've broken it out by function. So you have your general government and that consists of, um, you know, select board, town manager, finance, land use, town clerk. That overall function, um, is fifty point nine percent, um, expended. Uh, public safety is at fifty five point nine percent expended, education at forty four and a half percent. Public works at fifty three percent, human services at forty eight point eight percent. You have culture and recreation, um, in this function, although it's labeled recreation, um. This is because we're using the, the UMS, the Uniform Massachusetts Accounting System, um, function naming. But really this, in this function, we only have the library department. So library is at fifty five point two percent, um, expended. Debt service, uh, fifty two point four percent, and then insurance and other, uh, seventy one percent expended. And bottom line, general fund, um, were about fifty two point nine percent expended. These numbers are where I would expect them to be at this point in the fiscal year. Um, there are certain expenses, expenses that occur at different times of the year. You know, our, our debt service is scattered throughout the year. Um. You know, our insurance payments, um, our annual audit. You know, there are certain, um, yearly expenses that, you know, are spread out. So, um, but the numbers are not concerning to me. I think they are where they should be. You know, at this point of the fiscal year and departments overall continue to, you know, stay within their budgets and. Um, you know, taking advantage of any grant opportunities that are available. Now we'll get right into the budget. Uh, so this is a summary, um, of the overall budget. So general fund, we're looking at, uh, eighty seven million, five sixty six, six forty six, a three point one million. Increase or a three point seven one percent increase. Then you have the water enterprise fund, um, you're looking at seven million, two eighty, two thirteen, seventy one thousand, six ninety five increase. Or a point ninety nine percent increase. And then your sewer enterprise, you're looking at a million, eight thirty five, six forty one, sixty six thousand, four ninety one increase. Or a three point seven six percent increase. And bottom line, we're looking at a total operating budget of ninety six million, six eighty two, five hundred. Three point two million increase or exactly a three point five oh. It's, it's like three point four nine and several numbers after that. But we use Excel, so we round up. So you're looking at exactly three point five percent. Next slide. So this is just a, um, a history of, um, the operating budgets. So once again, we show it, um, we, we've showed that four different functions. You have municipal. Schools, fixed costs and debt. Um. Now, these percentages are the compound, compounded annual growth rate. Uh, you'll notice that municipal, um. From fiscal year sixteen to including the current town manager proposed budget. The growth there has been three point five four percent. Schools has been three point oh eight percent. Fixed costs, um, have been our largest increase at five point seven one percent. And I do want to note that, um, I mean, you have your fixed costs, your health insurance, pensions, O P E B. Um, property and liability, that includes costs for both town and school departments. And then you have your debt, um, which has had a minimal increase at one point one four percent. This here is just a, a pie chart of the revenue sources, um, that are being used for this proposed budget. You'll notice that the largest chunk of the pie is the tax levy at sixty eight point six percent. The next two are essentially the same number, uh, state aid and local receipts, about thirteen percent of, um, the overall revenues. Uh, the next largest revenue source is the ambulance fund. Um, the ambulance fund, um, we use that to offset, um. Fire, um, firefighter slash E M T salaries. We also use a portion of that, um, money to cover the pro EMS billing, um, fees that we have to pay. Uh, so they handle our, uh, monthly, uh, or our ambulance billing for us. So there is a service cost there. Then you get into your, um, water and sewer indirect costs. Um, so as you all know, um, enterprise funds, you know, they operate as businesses. Um, we do budget for, um, certain costs such as, you know, um, staff, um, a portion of, you know, benefits. Um, in total, um. We, so when we go through the budget process, we determine how much the enterprise funds owe the general fund. Um, and as I mentioned, you know, some of those could be staffing time, a portion of be- benefits, um, a portion of the debt, et cetera. Then you get into the next big funding source is free cash. As Paige mentioned, we're using about a hundred thousand in this proposed budget. The goal is, um, we are waiting for, you know, group insurance and property and liability come in, to come in. The goal is if those come in lower than our current projections, um, we would prefer to drop that number down. Essentially, you know, get back on, on our, on track to reduce, you know, the reliance on that for the operating budget. And then you'll notice a new funding source in this budget. So the fire stabilization fund, this was a new fund that was established. A little short of two years ago. Um, so our, uh, fire department, they have an on-staff mechanic who. Not only, you know, does repairs for, you know, the towns, um, you know, engines and apparatus, um. They provide the service to other municipalities and, um, we're able to obviously charge them for that service. So they've, we've created this fund to essentially house this, um, service that they provide. And now that is a funding source, um, that we use to pay for that mechanic and, um. For some of the, the equipment and such that they need to, to perform those repairs. And then finally, the last funding source is overlay surplus. Um, once again, just as free cash, the goal is to. Reduce our reliance on these two funding sources. Then we get on to the expense side. So when you break it down by function, uh, the largest chunk of the pie is education. At forty nine point one percent. The next big chunk is insurance and other. Uh, once again, this is both town and school. Then you get into, the next biggest chunk is pu- public safety at thirteen point eight percent. Then you have general government. That's, you know, all of the departments from, um, town manager. To finance, land use, municipal buildings, town clerk. Uh, then the next biggest one is debt service at three point seven percent. Then public works at three point one percent and, uh, library and human services are tied at one and a half percent. So these pies here just show you an overview, overview of the, uh, the water fund budget. So you'll notice the revenue is, you know, ninety seven percent water fees, three percent retained earnings. Uh, their retained earnings is essentially their free cash. On the expense side, um. They, uh, so the operating expenses are thirty seven point nine percent of their, um. Budget debt service, thirty seven point three percent and salaries twenty four point eight percent. And you'll notice that the, the debt service is pretty much the same size as the operating expenses, you know, over the last, since I've been here. Um, the town has borrowed, um. A good chunk of money, um, for some very, you know, overdue, um, water infrastructure improvements. Um, but as I mentioned earlier, water and sewer, they function as a, a business. So they have to be, you know, self-sufficient. So everything that, all the money they have to spend in a, in a fiscal year, that's all, um, factored into their water rates. Next one is the sewer fund, um, essentially the same breakdown. We use three percent of their retained earnings to fund the, uh, the budget. So once again, a ninety seven, three splits. Um, their operating expense, expenses are just shy of eighty six percent, salaries thirteen point seven and then debt service. Um, very small, uh, only point five percent. So here we have, um, so these are the proposed increases by function. So, um, as you saw earlier, the overall budget is going up by three million, two sixty nine, four eleven or three and a half percent. You could see, um, increases, increases here. Um, so general government, a small increase, um, forty four thousand, nine twenty seven or point nine five percent. Public safety, five eighty three K or five point oh nine percent. Education, a million, four forty eight, two oh one or three point four nine percent. Public works, um, fifty nine thousand, six forty six or two point two one percent. Our human services, um, budget is actually going down and that's due to, uh. A decrease in, uh, the number of veterans. Um, so there was a decrease to our, um, ord- ordinary benefits line. Then you get into the library. They're going up thirty two thousand and three dollars or two point five eight percent. Um, and this is in order for them to comply with the minimum, um, spending requirements. Our debt service is going down by a hundred fifty six thousand. Um, this is, um, a decrease. You know, in, in, uh, debt excluded projects. So it's not, um, a savings for the budget. It just means, you know, when you do a, a debt excluded project, you're allowed to raise additional taxes to pay for that debt service. And as that debt is falling off, that revenue is also dropping. So it's not really a budget saving. Insurance, another one point one two four million or six point two four percent. And then enterprise funds, a hundred thirty eight thousand, one eighty six or one point five four percent. And as I mentioned earlier, there, the water and sewer funds have very small increases. So this is just another way to look at, um, the budget. So when you look at. The overall increases per function, um, this table here to the left shows you. The percentage, um, of that, um, increase as a percentage of the overall budgetary increase. So you'll notice, you know, the largest increases are education at forty four point three percent. Of the overall three point two million and then the next largest chunk is the insurance and other. Um, at one point, one million or thirty four point four percent. Next one is public safety at seventeen point eight five percent. All of the others are, um. A lot smaller. Um, on this table here to the right, um, so these are the budgets, um, per function. Once again, education is the largest chunk of the pie at forty four percent of the ninety six point six million. Then insurance and other, public safety. Let me just see. Sorry, I have two screens going on, so I want to make sure I don't lose this. Um. So with, um, as I mentioned earlier, the insurance and other function includes both town and school, um. I did want to note, so when you look at our, um, employees, um, on the town side. We have, uh, forty two percent of the employees, um, are at top step. And on the school side, um, sixty five percent are at top step. So here we get into, um, so a summary, um, I know Paige went over some of this already, um. But once again, so we break it out by function. So in the general government, um, function. You know, that, that function includes contractual obligations, um, for salaries. Increases in fuel, utilities, uh, building maintenance, software renewals, um, and then just overall increases due to inflation. Um, that function is only increasing by zero point nine five percent. You have public safety. We are now in year three of our three-year union contracts and there were some, um, increases needed. Um, to fund, um, police and fire contracts. Um. There have been overall increases to the cost of police cruisers, um, maintenance supplies, um, on both sides, police and fire. The largest chunk of that increase is, um, due to our assessment for SEMREC going up. So it's going up from four hundred fifty thousand to six hundred thousand. And that was a known, um, increase. So essentially, um, what SEMREC did is, um. They, in order to build the facility, um, you know, they were given a, a grant from the state. And they took that grant and spread out the savings to each individual municipality for five years. We're now at that, the end of that five years. So the six hundred thousand really is what we should have been paying all along. Uh, we benefited from, you know, four years of, um, a reduced cost in that, uh, area. So overall there, you're looking at a five point oh nine percent increase. Education, your, um, public school budget is increasing by three point two five percent. Largely due to contractual salary obligations. Um, the southeastern regional assessment is increasing by eleven percent. Um, we are seeing, um, an increase in enrollment. Um, on their end, um. They're going through and, uh, renegotiating their transportation contract. So they're seeing some huge increases there. I did also want to note that, um, the state, um, and this is something we're following up with on, you know, on our end. Um, when it comes to regional school transportation, um, the state is supposed to pay for a hundred percent of that. They haven't been doing that. If they were to cover a hundred percent, our assessment would drop by an estimated thirty thousand dollars. Another piece here that you'll notice is, so we added the Norfolk Aggie. School to this function. Um, it used to be under the, uh, state and county assessments, but now we put it under the edu- education function, just to give it more visibility. Uh, that budget, it's estimated to increase by five percent. So you're looking at an overall three point four nine percent for education. Public works, uh, once again, you know, just overall increases to day-to-day expenses. You know, there are funds needed for stormwater management, engineering services, you know, roadway maintenance. Um, and overall two point two one percent increase there. And you'll hear there's, hear this, I mean, if Chris was here, you would have heard this already, um. But there have been talks about a potential stormwater, um, utility, um, in the future. So I'm sure that will come up again. Um, human services. There were, as I mentioned, you know, there was a reduction in, um, veterans benefits. Um, there was all. There were, as I mentioned, you know, there was a reduction in um, veterans benefits. Um, there was also a reduction in uh, the request for permitting software in the health department. That function overall is going down by four point point uh, four zero percent. That, sorry, just move something here. So library budget, um, so their budget is increasing by exactly two point five eight percent. They're required to spend a minimum of two and a half percent or or have a budgetary increase of a minimum of two and a half percent to comply with requirements sent um, set by the the Massachusetts Library of Florida Commissioners. Uh, debt service, once again, you know, that debt service is decreasing. Um, like I said, these are projects funded by debt exclusions. So this doesn't result in, you know, additional money available for operating budgets. Um. Insurance, another, um, our pension assessment is increasing by five point four four percent. This is a dollar amount that we get from the county. Um, we have no choice but to pay it. Uh, OPEV, we're keeping up with that funding, um. The general fund portion of nine eighty five, one thirty five. The water and sewer portion is res- resides in their budgets. Uh, group insurance and property and liability, uh, we're currently carrying ten percent. Um. We've had several meetings with Maya, uh, and this is the number they told us to carry for now. We're hoping that our final number is coming a lot lower than that. Uh, overall, here you're looking at six point two four percent. Then enterprise funds, as I mentioned earlier, it's a small increase. Um. On the enterprise fund side, there is a uh, a proposed new position, a DPW engineer funded at full by the water and sewer funds of forty sixty split. Um. And then, just see, make sure I didn't miss anything. And as I mentioned earlier, the departmental budgets include year three of the contracts. Um. We will begin negotiations for the next three years, um, later this fall. Um. So that is something to keep in mind as we go through this budget process. This slide here is um, just a visual. I didn't want to bore you all with a bunch of texts, so we threw in some pictures for you guys. Um. So this is just a history of um, the operating budgets. Um. So the years twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three are actuals. Um, so this is money that was actually spent. Twenty twenty four is um, a budgeted number, and then twenty twenty five obviously is the proposed budget. So here's a, an overview of um, the budget. Um. So your tax levy is um, so we're projecting a two point one million increase or three point sixty percent. And this um, this number here includes an estimated new growth of eight hundred thousand dollars. Um. That's something that I'm going to touch on a little later in the presentation. Um, it also includes the two and a half percent allowable by Prop two and a half, and then our uh, current uh, debt excluded projects are in this number as well. State aid, um, that's actually going down. So this eleven point nine million is based on the governor's uh, proposed budget. They still have to go through their process. So this number will change um, through town meeting. We probably won't know the final number until sometime in the summertime. Local receipts, um, we're projecting uh, twelve million dollars, um. Or a six point one nine percent increase. A lot of this, so um, the largest um, increases here to the projections are in our um, hotel motel meals tax. Um, we are factoring in some money for um, events at the stadium. Not a lot, because um, you can't rely on a full concert season, but you can um, project a few events. On available and other.
Marie, if I could interject for one second, um, so as far as local receipts, Dennis mentioned earlier, um, that there was, he had identified some conservative estimates baked into the twenty twenty five. Um, not to put you on the spot, but for twenty twenty four um, ex- expected um, run rate, as Dennis put it, what, what is our expectation for twenty twenty four local receipts?
So that's this number here in the twenty four budget. So we're expecting eleven.
That's a budget, though. I'm talking about.
Yeah, we're expecting the eleven point three, and so far we are, if I go back to the other slide, we just go all the way back. So we are seventy four percent of the way there with four months left in the fiscal year. So we'll certainly exceed that number.
Right, that's, so that's, that's, okay. So I won't belabor it, um. But I think that's what Dennis was getting at, and I also had that same thought, that um, if twenty twenty four is gonna come in closer to twelve, thirteen, fourteen million, then twelve million for twenty twenty five feels light.
And the reason that that number is only twelve million is a lot of, so for example, in fiscal year twenty three, we collected, I believe it was just a little bit over fourteen million. Um, a lot of that was.
Eighteen six million.
What was that?
Fourteen point six million.
Yes, it was a little over fourteen. I'm just looking at a lot of numbers here.
Yeah, I hear you. I got you.
So a lot of that was, you know, related to the renovations over at Gillette Stadium. That's one time revenues. So when you work on the next year's projections, you pull out any one time um, revenues that you received. And then you base your projections on averages. You look at where you are today, um, in the current year. And then where you can reasonably expect your revenues to come in. You obviously want to remain conservative. Um, you don't want to overestimate. Cause then that's where you end up with a revenue deficit. So that's why that number is only at twelve million. Um. When you pull out those permit fees, um, we did have, you know, Gillette had its largest um, concert season last spring and summer. Um. Like I said, we don't include all of those in our projections. Um. Are on the uh, cash flow side, so our um, right now, we're receiving um, about hundreds of thousands of dollars in um, interest income. As you know, right now, you know, you could easily go out and get a CD and get, you know, five, six percent. Um, our treasurer is doing a great job of, you know, maximizing our interest earnings. Once again, that's one time, you know, we expect that the interest rates will go back to where they were. You know, right now we're collecting, you know, seven hundred thousand in a year. When in no- in a normal year, we're only bringing in eighty K in interest income. Um, so there's a lot of that one time, you know, revenues that you have to adjust for.
Okay, I understand. So I I think while I'm on the topic, one of the things I would, I've a proposal or or a challenge for you would be to consider revenue sources um, that we may have been overly conservative. Identify four hundred thousand dollars in revenue and reduce free cash use in half from eight hundred to four hundred. That's my thought and my proposal. Um. I'll let you continue, but I I was hoping to just put that in there so that the board would have um, a chance to to consider that. Um, so thank you for the information. And carry on, please.
Yeah, Ashley, can I chime in something? Um. Obviously, some of those numbers, like we, we know what the tax revenue, you know, is gonna be, the taxes are gonna be paid and stuff, but we have to remember some of those numbers might not be underestimated, because you gotta remember, it's a, it's a long concert season. If those concerts don't happen in 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 twenty four, you know, so the 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 numbers, even though, like, like, ju- to say Marie said, oh, we, you know, we only, we've only collected, um, you know, fifty percent. We may not be going over that based on when some of those events there are happening, just like, just like she said about, um, you know, um, the the revenue coming into the building department with permits and stuff. So you gotta remember, some of those numbers, she they may not be underestimated based on when, you know, um. I I feel like the concerts are heavier into the beginning of the next fiscal year. Is it, is, would you, would you say that, Marie? I know we never know when they're gonna have them, but it's almost like once the good weather comes.
Late spring, um, yeah, and most of the summertime. Like I said, you know, you had, um, you know, two to three years of COVID essentially, where you didn't really have a lot of events. And, you know, once again, when we go to set our tax rate, the state looks at all of our projections and they'll refuse to set your tax rate if they think that you're being um, either overly preso- conservative or not conservative enough. Um, you know, they look to see, you know, if if I were to bump up local receipts to fourteen million dollars, I'd have to provide them with concrete proof. Okay, yes, we are going to get this money. Um. So we could um, run the risk of not having our tax rates set because we've um, overestimated revenues.
Yeah, I think, I do think there's room, Marie. I think there's, um, and I'm looking at the pilot program, three and a half million in twenty twenty three. And we're looking at two point seven um, in twenty twenty five. So I, um, twenty twenty four may come in at three million or three and a half or four. Um, so I'm just, again, suggesting that some, we we have significant um, conservative estimates built in here. And I would, I'm thinking about, the reason I'm thinking about reducing free cash is because that's what our policy states. That's what we've talked about, um, in terms of uh, transparency and identifying revenues and expenses more transparent in a more transparent manner. So I'm proposing this with all, with all of that in mind.
Okay, um, so where was I?
Hand up, Marie, and I think he was gonna say.
Yeah, I can't see you guys.
We can see your hands up, Dennis. You're just on mute if you wanna ask Marie your question.
Okay, so um, no, I'm just gonna echo, uh, that's uh, exactly where where I was coming from, Seth, and I think you you hit a lot of areas, and I perfectly get what you're saying, Marie, but I do think there's some opportunities on the revenue side without cap- capturing the state's attention that we could explore further. And I, I think Seth highlighted some of them. I have some other ideas as well, but that's really enough for tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I would just note, so the, with the stadium, we are guaranteed um, about one point point five million dollars. And that's with or without events. From that one point five, you have to remove about two hundred thousand dollars of the liability insurance that they pay for police and fire. So you're talking about essentially one point three million guaranteed, give or take. Then um, to get to the two point seven, we're factoring in about six or seven events. Um, now if they don't have those six or seven events, we're only gonna get the one point three million dollars. And then you have an even larger um, revenue deficit. Um. So I just wanted to just point that out. Um, but we can get into that a little more.
I mean, Mr. Kraft built the stadium to, and expanded it and used to to use it. So I think the stadium will get significant use. And if you were to estimate twenty twenty four or this year's um, pilot payments, I would guess it's gonna be more than three and a half million is based on what we've seen over this past year. Um, so I think there, I think there is opportunity, but that's, again.
Sure, um, so uh, next category, so available uh, slash other, um. You know, that includes free cash, overly surplus, ambulance, um, fire stabilization fund. Um, so there's a two hundred nineteen thousand dollar increase there or four point seven nine percent. On the enterprise fund side, so revenues equal expenses. So you're looking at nine point one million there, um, or one hundred thirty eight thousand dollars or one point five four percent increase. So on the revenue side, overall, we're looking at a um, available revenue of a hundred million, six forty seven, zero fifty seven. Three point one million forty three or three point two two percent. Then on the expense side, um, so you have your town government, um. There you're looking at seven hundred fourteen thousand, seven eighty two or three point three three percent increase. Education, um, you're looking at a million four forty eight, two oh one or three point four nine percent. So uh, shared expenses, debt, insurance, pensions, uh, you're looking at nine hundred sixty eight thousand, four point five one percent. Enterprise funds, as I mentioned, you know, revenues equal expenses there. Um. So you're looking at the one point five four percent increase there. And then, um, we include, um, so you're supposed to include um, state and county assessments, um, any snow and ice deficits and any overlay that you're planning to raise for the, the fiscal year twenty five budget. So there we're looking at uh, three point nine million dollars, um, or actually, uh, it's a decrease um, compared to last year. And the reason there's a decrease is uh, so based on the uh, the governor's um, proposed budgets, although our um, revenue side is going down, um, the assessments that they're charging us are going down. So on the expense side, you're looking at three point one five seven million or three point two four percent. And bottom line, you'll see the zero, just showing that it is a current balance budget. This here is just a visual of um, our tax levy history. You know, twenty two, twenty two and twenty three are actuals, twenty four and twenty five are budgeted um, amounts. This here is um, just a spreadsheet showing you um, the actual numbers. Um. Once again, you know, you you take, so for the twenty five budget, we start with last year's levy limit of fifty eight million, sixty, six sixty four, nine forty three. You do the calculation for the allowable two and a half percent. You put in there a new growth projection. As I mentioned, you know, we have that at eight hundred thousand, um, and that's because there's not a lot of activity going on. Um, you know, new growth is critical for the town. Um, we're just not seeing a lot of new growth. Um. When you add those into that fifty eight point six million, you get your new levy limit, which is sixty million, nine thirty one, five sixty six or a three point eight six percent increase. Um. Then outside of that, we're allowed to add in um, any debt exclusions that you have. So one point eight million in here. And then you get your total maximum allowable allowable tax levy of sixty two million, seven seventy eight, three fifteen or three point six three percent increase. This here is just a, a visual of uh, state aid history. So as I mentioned, you know, the preliminary numbers are based on the governor's budget. You know, as I mentioned, here you can see that our revenue side compared to last year is decreasing by a hundred thirteen thousand. Um, but on the assessment side, um, last, or in the current fiscal year, um, they're charging us two point nine one million, um, in the governor's budget. They're proposing charges of two point six million. So it's a net increase of one point one eight percent. Local receipts, another uh, visual here. And then uh, so the average before uh, COVID, um, for local receipts was about eleven point seven million dollars. Here's uh, so here are our local receipts history. So you have three years of actual revenue collections. Then you have the current year's budgeted estimates. And then your preliminary budget for twenty five. Um, so here we're looking at twelve million, and you'll notice, um, the uh, the revenues that we did go up on, on our estimates. So we went up on hotel motel, meals tax, uh, payment in lieu of taxes, fees, um. A little bit on the license and permitting side. Um. And you'll see here our investment income, what I was talking about earlier, how we're seeing, um, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. But when you look at the previous years, you know, we were in twenty two, we only brought in fifty nine K. Um. So those numbers, they are budgeted very conservatively. Um. This mitigation, um, so this is cost sharing with uh, Gillette and the charter school. So this is an actual number that we bill them. Um, miscellaneous recurring, so in this area here, you'll, um. We deposit any billboard revenues that we get, sell tower leases, um, and any other miscellaneous revenue that comes in throughout the year, but doesn't fit into one of these other uh, categories.
Marie, if I, just, um, real quick. Marie, if I just um real quick, um hotels, motels and meals. Um, do you expect twenty twenty-four to be that much lower than twenty twenty-three? Or do you expect twenty twenty-four to be around the same level as twenty twenty-three? And then we're actually showing a decline from twenty-four to twenty-five?
So right now, we so we only have two uh quarters worth of um hotel motel and meals tax. And so far, once again, due to the the large summer season that they had and the Army Navy game, we're seeing um that these revenues will probably exceed fiscal year twenty-three. Um, but once again, you know, we're preparing these numbers about a year behind of when you actually collect them. So you're, you know, you base your estimates off of averages and what you can reasonably um expect to happen.
Okay, so would we expect anything in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five that would lead us to believe that they would be lower than twenty twenty-three?
It I I can't really say, like I said, we've only received two quarters worth. Um. We would probably have a better idea as we get closer to town meeting, um because you'll have three quarters worth and then next and then assuming that Gillette is going to have, you know, several concerts in the spring time. You know, anything that occurs prior to June thirtieth would be this fiscal year's revenues.
Right, then that's that's the answer I expected, Marie. All I'm suggesting is I would expect twenty twenty-four to be higher than twenty-three and twenty-five to be in the same space. So that's where we have an opportunity to reduce our free cash expenditure and and normalize this a little bit.
See. So then uh so we get into the available funds history. Um, so these are these other funding sources that are available. Um. You know, overlay surplus, we're expecting to use seven hundred forty thousand dollars. Free cash, eight hundred thousand, um a hundred thousand from the fire stabilization fund, um one point nine million from the ambulance fund. And then two thousand six hundred eleven from the recreation revolving. And this number, um, you'll notice it was a lot higher in previous fiscal years. Um, that was back when um they had full-time staff that was paid out of the revolving fund. This twenty-six hundred only covers um the the Medicare portion um for the summer um seasonal staff. So that's why that number is a lot lower. Um, down here.
I saw Steph has her hand up. Sorry, I didn't notice the fourth step you weren't in my.
Finish your thought, Marie. I don't want to catch a mid-sentence. Go ahead, finish your thought.
I was just going to get down here into the uh so the balances for uh stabilization funds. So our general stabilization fund is at four point five six six million and our capital stabilization fund is at three hundred thousand, three thirty-nine. Um, let's see here. Um, you know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, free cash and overlay surplus, um. You know, any budgetary savings, you know, um, we would expect to use those to reduce the use of free cash. Um, that was really all I was going to say. Um, did you have a question, Stephanie?
Um, actually, actually, just wanted to make a comment to to Seth. I, you know something, I tend to want like want to be a little conservative, but then then I realized what you were getting at, Seth. If if the numbers truly can be a little bit more, then we're not using the free cash. I, you know, like I I got when you said it the second time, I then I I got what you meant because, you know, I tend to wanna lean a little more conservative, but of course, I would like this to you you know, the uh best practice of not using is much free cash for me is, you know. Yeah, I think we I think we agree on that. I think I I didn't get your drift the first time you said it. So I I just want to tell you, I I I agree with you.
Okay, thanks, Stephanie.
So uh indoor costs, as I mentioned earlier, these are costs that um the enterprise funds re reimburse the general fund for. Um, so we're looking at a about a one point five eight percent increase here. Um, these numbers numbers will get finalized prior to town meeting and then you'll notice them in the uh the town meeting warrant article under those respective budgets. So um, so other budget items to consider, um. So I, you know, as Paige mentioned earlier, um, the town manager recommended budget does not include any new general fund positions. Um. The projected revenues are not enough to cover these new positions. Um. I've put the actual dollar amounts here. So for police, um for one additional patrol officer, um that dollar amount was ninety-five thousand, eight oh five for fire, for two um additional firefighters, you were looking at um a hundred seventy-four thousand, sixty-six. Uh, this also included um additional funding that was requested for their provisional firefighter program. Library, uh it was twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, this request was for uh to bring their team librarian to full-time status. And then on the DPW side, um initially, the DPW engineer position request was um to have that position be split between the general fund and the enterprise funds. Um, you know, given the limitations on the general fund side, um that position was shifted over to the enterprise funds and from my understanding, um the board of uh water and sewer commissioners are in support of that position. Um. It's so uh yeah, the total there was sixty-three thousand, five twenty-six. Um. Once again, you know, we're looking into reducing our reliance on free cash and overlay surplus if possible. Um, you know, as I mentioned earlier, new growth is very critical. We're not really seeing a lot of new growth. Um, you know, keeping in mind, you know, upcoming contract negotiations for all seven um union contracts. Um. In total, um, the new position um slash additional salary request cuts um was three hundred fifty-seven thousand, three ninety-seven. Um, and we're using about a million, five forty of uh free cash and overlay uh surplus. Um. One thing to note is, you know, we're able to maintain existing positions. We're not cutting any positions. Um. You know, there are adjustments in here for certain fixed costs and inflationary increases. Um. You know, there's no um cuts to services. Um. I did, you know, also want to note that, you know, Foxborough um historically has to use free cash towards our operating budget, which, you know, I I'm not for that at all. Um. You know, obviously, you know, you have to be realistic, you know, if your revenues are not there, um. You know, outside of having an override done, there's really not much flexibility there unless you know, we keep going back to this new growth. Um. You know, overall in Massachusetts, um seventy-five percent of communities have had an override pass. You know, out of that twenty-five percent um that haven't, um half of those are taxing to the max, Foxborough being one of them. You know, because of this, you know, things are very tight. Um, you know, I know we have the stadium and the revenues that come along with that, um, but you can't be, you know, you can't overestimate in all areas, um, because you know, you don't want to run the risk of ending up with revenue deficit, you know, say if we get another pandemic, um. I mean, you all saw what happened during those uh couple fiscal years. Um, you know, overall, the town as a whole, I think, needs um new taxable growth. You know, whether it's new businesses, new development, um. You know, once, you know, we start to see some of that, you know, the town can provide some tax relief to the residential class. You know, the the more CIP, commercial, industrial and personal property tax base that you have, the more levy capacity that you have as well. Um. You know, overall, the town is, you know, it's willing, it's living within its means. Um, but as you know, given that that service that we have, you know, that was funded within the levy, you know, that puts a string on the budgets. You know, just some um things to think about as we get through this process. And then our next steps, um. So the next step is um for you as a board to um you know, make a decision on your recommended budget. Um advisory budget committee budget meetings began last Wednesday. Those will run through early March. I believe they end on March sixth or the budget piece of it. Um, we'll obtain final numbers for group insurance and property and liability insurance. We'll continue to monitor the Commonwealth's budget process um to make updates to the state aid numbers. Um, you know, we'll continue to monitor construction and permitting activity for a potential increase to that eight hundred thousand in new growth that we're carrying right now. And then as another um side project, um, you know, we'll begin to work on updating the financial policies to make those effective um July one. So be on the lookout for some uh some documents on that. And then I believe that should be it. So any questions? Comments, concerns?
Marie, quick, quick question. Um, I mean, the the new positions, I mean, they're o- ob- obviously, uh the public safety ones are are pretty cl- pretty clear. Um. The the library, I I get that was a new position that that we I think we were told that part time was, you know, um, I'd have to listen to to um I although Paige hasn't uh recommended it, so I guess it's it's not an an issue, we would have had to listen, but um I just want to ask about the um the engineer. Now, I know we went ahead and put Lance, gave him a little more, gave him an assistant. Um. Uh DPW director, are we replacing Lance or was that the thought? Is that why they want to add an engineer?
So this would be an additional position. Sorry, Paige, did you want to go?
Yeah, I'll I I mean, like Marie was about to say, it'll be additional, but I know um that they're concerned about a few things. On the sewer side, they have, they haven't been able to track down I N I. So they're basically paying for um MFN, they're paying higher numbers than they need to because they're they have too much flow going through that's unaccounted. Um, also, as mentioned, the stormwater, there's the MS four requirement, so they've been, they did basically have, they told me all along that they need more help at the DPW. Um, I went during the restructuring, I wasn't able to commit to anything like that. I did know they were going to request an an engineer. I didn't necessarily know for sure it was going to be this year, but I, you know, I had a hint of it. But no, I I believe they've been saying that, you know, structurally, that department is running shorthanded for all the engineering requirements. They're also, we don't, the planning board no longer has an engineer to do inspections. Um, for years, we had a a wonderful retired eighty-year-old engineer that would come do it for forty dollars an hour. Um, he retired, retired, so now we're relying on um our DPW to do our construction engineers. So they their their scope keeps expanding. Um, and you know, the two of them, we we've seen that the challenges they had. So I do believe it's justified. Um, and I think there's a lot more work. It's just we haven't been able to to fund it this year due to the 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 fiscal situation.
No, make makes sense. And I I mean, I guess the fact that you weren't recommending it, I just, I mean, obviously, that's the first thing I thought. I'm like, I'm like, you know, we're not now Lance isn't, it wasn't going to be just assistant DPW director. And of course, um, you know, Chris would be coming before AdCom, coming before before Russ and and telling us why he needed. I was just, I was just curious. So that would have been regardless, that would have been a position that they would have liked to have gotten if if the money was there to fund.
And I do believe they need it. Uh, there's, this is by no means need saying they don't need it. Um.
Just the money wasn't there this year.
Not in the general fund. I mean, they it seems that they, because of the the work with the sewer, um, you know, and the water, they're able to allocate it using the enterprise funds, but under the general fund, we just couldn't do it, particularly in light of, you know, the public safety issues as well. Um, and the restructuring, it just didn't fall into place this time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I think that, like Marie said, I mean, and Seth and Dennis, I know you have comments, um, you know, you have my town manager budget uh recommendation, and I think perhaps we need to put some time on an upcoming agenda for the board to discuss their budget recommendations, because obviously you need to vote a budget. And whether it's going to be my budget or some different budget, you know, if you want to change some things on your side, you know, you have your ability to make your own recommendation. I assume giving this information tonight, you're not ready for that tonight. In fact, we don't have a motion prepared or anything to that, but I do think um I was just about to text Katie that we'll probably need a future agenda item for you all to discuss kind of what you want to do as a board.
Yeah, I I was kind, um, am I muted here? Where am I?
You're here, we can hear you, Dennis.
Okay, good. And you know, I was trying to uh resisting trying to get into too much of the weeds tonight because I know we didn't have time to really talk about it. It's gonna be a challenging budget. Um. I do think there's some conservatism uh in on the revenue side, but there's certainly a lot of challenges on the expense side. Uh, I'd like to delve into uh, you know, some of the the uh union contracts as well because you know, we've gone through a three-year cycle with the contracts and typically the way contracts are done is you know, the last year is where it's it's weighted heavily heavily heaviest uh in terms of uh increases. So you know, that's probably part of what we're seeing in terms of uh the expenses on the labor side, which we haven't really talked about, but there's overall growth in labor and it's probably the third year of contract. So there's a lot in terms of collective bargaining thinking forward as well.
And we do anticipate next year's um new contracts to also be a challenge, you know, as we all know, costs, not just for town, you know, town government, but for all households have gone up. And um, you know, we've been sort of warned that these quote-unquote hometown discounts or whatever concessions made, you know, these unions are going to be poised to try to help their members, you know, adapt to some of the cost of living increases. So we know this is going to be a very challenging um negotiation process and um that's one of the reasons I think Marie is you know, also promoting a um a conservative approach in that regard, just with respect to new employees and whatnot, is to ensure that we're we're not setting ourselves up in the future and we're making clear this year that we're already acknowledging the fiscal constraints that we're going to be dealing with next year. Um, and from the planning side, you all know I came from planning and um it has been quiet on the planning board, you know, I mean, we've seen some you know, we do have the Walnut Street project and um you know, perhaps the auditorium, but that's going to take a couple of years to get to. So I mean, we're not seeing a lot of projects on the planning side over the past year. So the growth projections are a bit of a challenge, you know, when we look ahead, we're not seeing a lot out on Route One. Um, you know, the most of the things that the planning board's been doing are like in-law apartments and those aren't necessarily going to bring your values up when it comes to growth. So we we are seeing somewhat of a flattening trend on that. And then the only last thing is um Seth and Dennis about yours. You know, as I've delved into the budget and whatnot, um, I've kind of lamented to the team and to Marie, you know, that Foxborough's the poorest rich town I've ever seen in the sense of, you know, I have the benefit of sitting there all summer and seeing the checks come in from the stadium, you know, for this concert and that concert. And it is so frustrating that those them those funds really shouldn't under principle be used for, you know, their one-time expenditures or one-time revenues that should not be used for recurring expenses. So that makes it quite a challenge for us. Um, and I have to say, particularly on the backs of public safety, I see those guys, you know, staying out till two, three in the morning, coming into work the next morning and, you know, the checks, they go into this fund and we can't necessarily just turn them around and hire a police officer or hire a firefighter. So it is a challenge that we see um and we acknowledge, but um and I'm not saying that there can't be some massaging of it, you know, Marie's job is to look at things conservatively. Um, but there is the risk, you know, of of overestimating and if something did happen, you know, you would fall short. So um, there maybe, I don't know if there's a unique case study we could make for Foxborough where we do have this. We're the only town that has this, and so we have to follow the rules of every other town and all financial principles, and yet we have this sort of unicorn of financial benefit that we can't really use always to help where we need it. So um. I'll stop there. I see Seth has his mic off, so I I mean, on, so.
I'm turning it off.
All right. So with that, do we want to pick up this item for a future agenda, once everyone's had a little bit of time to digest and maybe, you know, my recommendation would be maybe to come back to Paige individually with what you, you know, have questions on or where you'd like to maybe deviate so that we have some sort of list and guided discussion for our next discussion as a board. Um, do you think that worked, Paige? If, you know, if there's areas that people are concerned about or want to deviate, starting there just to help organize, organize us, you know, with five people and a big budget. Okay, all right, Paige is nodding her head. So with that, any other comments before we move over to town managers update?
Uh, no, the only thing I'd I'd recommend uh Leah is that we we will get some time put aside so we can discuss this.
Yes, absolutely. We'll come with that that organized list of people. Just reach out to Paige in advance before.
Right.
I'm just just so for clarification, I'm looking at the calendar, um and it says Tuesday, March twenty. I'm just, just so for clarification, I'm looking at the calendar and it says Tuesday, March twenty-sixth is the Select Board final recommendations on budget. So that's just so you know, you have a little over a month to do that. So yes, please let me know and we'll formulate a plan. I mean, we'll, we'll sort of see what comes in to figure out a strategy on how to convey or deal with it. You know, I don't know if it'll be a bunch of changes, one change and we'll figure out a way. So Seth and Dennis, I'm looking at you guys. Let us know how you want to proceed.
And we should probably place hold for the twelfth and twenty-sixth, like a twelfth to kick off the conversation, get everything to you by then. Give people some time to comb through the budget, talk to people, see if there's questions. And then, you know, hopefully, I think, I think that's really a two-meeting discussion probably with the twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
Agreed. And if, if we have a light, I don't know where we are on the agenda for the next meeting, how busy that is. It depends on how quickly this all comes together.
I think if I could just add, I know just because I've been in the AdCom meetings, I know there's some hesitation there for them to make a decision on the budgets if, you know, the budget hasn't been vetted by you guys. So I don't know if it's possible to just have a follow-up on the twenty-seventh rather than waiting until March. Because they're, they're going through the budgets right now. And I think they would feel more comfortable if, you know, the budget's been vetted by you guys and you've given your recommendations.
Because I'm looking at the calendar right now and it has our final recommendations on the twenty-sixth. But to your point, you know, their final recommendations are the next day on the twenty-seventh. So that is a little tight. If we have time, I agree, Marie, that we should probably back that and maybe even try to have a vote by March twelfth, have the kickoff discussion on the twenty-seventh and then the vote on the twelfth, just to be able to back into the calendar a little bit easier.
Um, if I could jump in a little bit, I don't want to put Katie on the spot, but Katie, do you have that calendar in front of you of potential topics?
I, I do. I'm going to put apologies. I do have that on for the twenty-seventh. The agenda looks, looks pretty good besides a department head update. So I can slot that in if that's something you want to. A large chunk.
Which department's coming in on the twenty-seventh?
Ah, police.
Police, okay.
It seems like that's what the general consensus is. Let's slot it in.
Sure, that sounds great. And then also slot it in for the twelfth to make a final vote.
Well, yes.
Marie, do you, do you happen to know who's, who's coming in to present to AdCom tomorrow night?
Uh, tomorrow, it's library and public safety.
And you know, you know something, I mean, I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, may, maybe, maybe Seth or Dennis would agree or maybe disagree. So he, so here's the thing, AdCom is gonna, is gonna divulge into these budgets, you know, more than we do. I mean, obviously, we can, we can make a list of questions, we can go to Paige, we can go to the department heads. But I'll be honest with you, they, I don't think they need our okay to make a decision themselves. They're supposed to be independent, looking at it, which, which, I mean, it's nice for everybody to work together. We might have questions. I'm going to try to, try to make the, the meetings there because you get, you get a lot of information by the department heads, you know, and, and some from AdCom may ask a question that, that, you know, that maybe one of us didn't think of. So it's nice to pay attention, but they, they get, they get a, 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 up and close from each department head. And, and I don't think it should be, you know, with the Board of Selectmen, they, they, they should be able to make a decision without knowing what the Board of Selectmen decides. It's like, these, these are three, three recommendations. And of course, we're probably all going to be very close. You know, I don't, I don't think, you know, we're going to look at Paige's budget and say, oh, I don't agree with five hundred thousand dollars of that or that, you know, us or AdCom are going to do that. But I, I, I think they can, they can make a decision. I don't know, maybe, maybe Seth or Dennis would agree or disagree upon that. But I don't think they need to know ours to.
So Seth, the concern is that we would, we would have changes after they've already reviewed it. So they'd be reviewing the stale budget document. That's, that's, I think there's the primary concern there.
But each, each one is going to make a recommendation to town meeting.
They make a recommendation on a stale budget, it's not as valid as if they made a recommendation on the budget that's actually going to town meeting.
Well, there's a, when it goes to town meeting, each one has a recommendation.
Right, but it's the version of the budget that is, is in question. So if we send a budget to the advisory committee that they review and approve or recommend, and then a different budget goes to town meeting that they have not technically reviewed because it's changed or updated.
Yeah, I guess my point is, I don't think we, we should rush our recommendation so that they have that before, you know. I'm not saying we, we give it to them the night before, but, you know, when Marie said that, you know, they like to know ours. I, I think, I think each, each entity is going to have a general idea, what they think of the, of the budget. And then, you know, and then we'll go, go from there. So I, I get what you're saying, Seth. But I just don't think we, we need to rush our decision to help AdCom because I think they're going to sit with each department head.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, both Seth and I have been through the AdCom process quite a bit over the years. So.
Me too, me too, Dennis. Three years before you. Yeah.
Before me, yeah. So I like the sequence that Seth has kind of laid out. But I, I do think one thing that would be helpful is to maybe kind of prioritize. I mean, we asked that with police, is maybe prioritize the areas that we really want to look at where, you know, there's most of the opportunity. There might be a way to think about it. Maybe Paige could think about that.
And their AdCom's meeting this week was moved to Thursday. So there's no meeting tomorrow night. It's Thursday at six thirty.
Awesome. Thanks, Marie.
Yep. And I'll send you, I, I had, I thought that you had, you had received the calendar, but I could send it to you. So you have that AdCom budget review calendar.
And for anyone watching at home, we can get that posted to the AdCom site and then the AdCom liaisons too, just for, for people at home as well. Okay. So with that, are we good to move on to Town Managers' update? All right. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
All right. So we're just shuffling people on Zoom, but I think you're all set to go ahead and start.
Okay, thank you. So top story, obviously, today was the weather. Town Hall did open. Not a popular opinion. I think every other town hall was closed, but we waited, Chris and I waited till six AM this morning and by then the snowstorm had clearly fizzled. So we did open Town Hall. The MBTA communities, just a reminder that the public hearing is scheduled for February twenty-second. We have been receiving a lot of comments, emails and whatnot from the neighbors over in the Ashcroft Lane, that area. And I just write back to them and ask them to watch the planning board meeting of January seventeenth. And then, you know, because it, there seems to be a concern that the town is proposing to do something over in that area. And I think it was pretty clear at that meeting that the town zoning proposal does not include any of the North Street area or any of the land around there. So, but the public hearing is scheduled for February twenty-second. There's also all our zoning hearings are that night, so it'll be a busy night. World Cup, the FIFA announced the five group stage matches. So in 2026, the town will be hosting five of these stage matches from June thirteenth to June twenty-sixth. And then there's knockout round matches on the June twenty-ninth and July ninth. So those are big, uh, big events, they call them the equivalent of a Super Bowl. I remember during the financial summit, the, the concern came up that we were going to lose our concert season. But the estimation is that with seven World Cup games, you know, that's going to make up any loss of concert revenue just through the, the tremendous demand and, and that's going to go on during, around that. So and then we assume they'll be back up and running for the concert season after World Cup. So we don't, we aren't anticipating the drop that was mentioned at that meeting. The Foxborough Youth Police Academy has been announced. That's a, a new program that Chief Grace and his team are running. It's running July twenty-second to August second. And Officer Godino at the fire, at the police station should be contacted. There is some information up on socials. So check it out and it looks like a great program. So from human resources, we have my old position, well, my current position, I mean, I don't know where I stand on that. Director of Land Use and Economic Development. I'm hoping we find someone soon. There's also still a water tech veteran surfaces, surfaces officer, payroll and benefits administrator. That's a new one. Julie has given her notice, so she's moving on to another town. And then we have advertised for a part-time HR specialist. And then also this breaking news, the lifeguards, summer junior camp counselors and summer rec counselor positions are now up on the web. So it's a good opportunity for some summer jobs. Our construction updates, PJ Hayes is slowly completing the pipe installation, but snow and rain slowed it down. So we're thinking that he's going to have to wait until spring to get the, the four ninety-five overpass taken care of. And then Chris did just let us know that JH Lynch has been contracted to do sidewalks, curving and paving work on Route One in 2024 and 2025. So we anticipate that work on Route One to start in the spring. And then we have a couple town property permits, the, let's start thinking spring. The JC's Spring Craft and Vendor Fair is scheduled for May fourth from nine to three with a rain date of May fifth. And then on the comment also is Stay Fit Bollywood Style from six to seven. And I forgot to write the date down on that one, so I apologize, but that's sometime in the spring, I believe. So that's all I have.
All right, great. Next is Selectmen's update, Mark.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything, Leah, unless any of the board members have something.
Nope. Moving on to action items.
All righty.
All right, we do have to roll call all these individually, so you guys know the, the drill and the order we'll take. So motion to approve the 2024 Presidential Primary Warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? Dennis, after I call that, you can just, you can roll, you can do your roll call vote on each of these as we go.
Dennis, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Seth, yes.
Great, great. Next one, we have a historical commission appointment and Mark, I see you are, you've been hanging on the phone too, so I, I see you there. It looks like we have, we have your letter here, so it looks like Jonathan Glover has resigned and William Sides is looking to change from an associate to a full member. And then you have a new member. Is it, is it Liza Click or Liz Click? In one place we have Liza and we have Liz on the motion. If you could just clarify the name now that I'm looking at this. You can just unmute yourself, Mark. Forensic.
All right. Can you hear me?
We can, yes. Thanks for having us. It's been a long meeting. We've seen you here.
All right. I must have made somebody mad. Anyway, it's Liza Click.
Liza, okay. All right, great. And Bill Sides is going from associate to full, to full-time member. Do we need any motion on that to, to, to change Mr. Sides's status? We only have one for Liza.
I didn't think we needed a motion to make him a full-time member, so I did just have the one on for Liza.
All right, great. So anything else to add, Mark Forensic?
No, I mean, Liza's here. She's been waiting. I mean, she's a, you know, she's a real townie. She's got roots in the town. Father was Bud Dudley, noted cartoonist for Foxborough Company and many, many projects in town. And she's embedded, she's particularly interested in preserving old properties, so we look forward to having her on the board.
All right, great. And my apologies, Liza, we can't see who's on unless it's a panelist. So my apologies that I didn't see you and that you've been hanging on this, this whole time. So we're certainly excited, especially with your, you know, depth and knowledge to have you join the Historical Commission.
Thank you. I'm happy to already be a part of things and getting to know all the fun things we can do as a commission.
All right, great. So again, my apologies. I know it's been a long meeting and you've been hanging on. So with that, motion to appoint Liza Click as an associate member to the Historical Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first, 2027.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Dennis, yes.
You, yes?
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Liza, thanks, Mark.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Great. A motion to appoint Joseph Sanders as a new member to the Foxborough Cultural Council with a term to end May thirty-first, 2027.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Sanders is certainly diving in. I think we put him on the, the Veterans Board recently as well, so glad to see that. So Dennis, go ahead.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes?
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. Now the next one, when, when looking at boards and committees and Katie's been doing a great job along with the town clerk's office kind of looking at this, there's a, there's an agreement to disband the playing fields committee. I've talked to people, everyone, you know, there was a need for it at one point, but there isn't any longer. So motion to approve the request to disband the playing fields committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes?
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. And next is the Normandy Farms One Day Liquor Licenses. This is an event we've seen year over year. I don't believe we've had any issue because we haven't heard any. So motion to approve nine one-day beer and wine licenses for Normandy Farm Food Truck Festival slash Brew Fest for the 2024 season. The dates are April thirteenth, April twentieth, April twenty-seventh, May eighteenth, June first, June twenty-second, September fourteenth, September twenty-eighth, October fifth at seventy-two West Street. And just as a reminder, you do have to be a camper to attend these. These are not for the public to attend.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes?
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. And in continuance of Katie's work with boards and committees, we do have to officially move to appoint Paige as the Town Manager to the following boards and committees versus the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Municipal Hearing Officer, Semric Board of Directors, all with a term to end May thirty-first, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes?
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. Approval of minutes from the January thirtieth, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes?
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. And anything else before a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, I, I certainly want to thank Leah for jumping in and doing a great job today. Leah, thank you. I know a few of us were having a hard time getting on and you did a yeoman's job jumping in at the last minute. Thank you very much.
No problem. I'm completely comfortable Zoom. This is what I do all day, every day. So I'm much more, much comfortable and happy to help. So with that, everyone should save the date though for the executive session on February twenty-seventh. And then we'll reconvene in an open session after that if we just plan accordingly. And I'm sure Paige and everyone will be in touch about, you know, a potential tour. So with that, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Dennis, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Mark, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Seth, yes.
All right, great. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.